Right, councillors, we will get underway again. Welcome to the last day of the hearings. Can I just explain a little or clarify for councillors? It's been the last couple of days have been particularly tight in terms of time and for those, most of us but particularly to those who have not been through an annual plan process before, this is, that is not, we're not able to do it at this time the way we normally do. There was so little time available for the large number of people who wished to present in person, that we couldn't allow any timing between the scheduled speaking times for questions. So you'll see from the schedule that the only time for speaking, so necessarily we were going to run out of time. So we can't and I won't cut people below the five minutes or 10 minutes, whatever their internal place. The only control we have over time is how many and what kind of questions we ask. So that's in our hands in terms of the timing. Right, could I invite Stu Bryce to the table?
Thank you very much. Thanks very much for your time slotting in this morning. I understand you have a busy day, so I think it's quite short. I'd like to thank the Dunedin City Council for the continued support of both the volunteer service and the regional lifeguard service. Our submission today is for additional funds to our city grant to support the Monday to Friday primary school holiday lifeguarding programme. Last year, Dunedin City Council Regional Lifeguard Programme was delivered to four city beaches, that being Ryghin, St Clair, St Kilda and Warrington, by 12 full-time employees and a supervisor over a six-week period. During this period, they did over 2,500 lifeguarding hours with only one rescue required, that was required, but over 2,000 people involved in preventative actions. And what we call a preventative action is where the lifeguards have a direct involvement with an individual to stop them getting into trouble. So in theory, you could say we stopped 2,000 people being rescued. We also did run an educational programme, a special education programme as well as separate schools, to cover over 5,000 primary school students. Volunteer patrols last year in Dunedin City Council provided over 5,500 hours of volunteer lifesaving services at the same beaches and performed over 6,000, 16, sorry, rescues and preventative actions to 7,000 people. The 2013-2014 summer, as you'll be well aware, was not one to write home about, and this is evident in the statistical information we have. Last year Dunedin did a sixth of the rescues in the regional lifeguard programme that it did in the past and only engaged with half the number of people that did the year before. 2012-13, 13, summer was a beautiful summer, so we can't really complain about that. The funding, support additional to the city grant will help ensure that we can provide lifeguarding services at the beaches to meet our minimum service requirements and for equipment, and to ensure that the lifeguards on the beach are the highest calibre with the equipment they need to deliver a good service to the expectations of the VECO public. This means we have a set standard we have that we deliver to with our service and equipment. So for example, if you see the inflator, we have a minimum requirement, we have three lifeguards on those beaches. So two years ago, we were supported with an additional to our city grant to cover that. Last year, we were back to our original city grant and this is the best back on for that side as well.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Questions, councillors?
Can I just understand the difference? This is obviously paid position that you need to fund, as opposed to volunteers? So what is the split on the beach when you're open, or how does that work?
Split in regards to who's paid and who's volunteer. The Saturday and Sunday is 100% volunteer and the Monday to Friday primary school holiday funding is funded by Dunedin. And at that time, 100% paid, but it's a very busy day, some of the volunteers come down and support.
Okay. If we didn't do pay lists as we didn't last year, would you use volunteers instead, or would you pay and fund the money elsewhere?
Last year was partially my mistake, while we were within the pipe. I didn't pick up the one-year grant on the previous year, so we absorbed that. It was very hard to absorb, but as you can see, if we went to get this grant this year, we would have to work with staff around the number of hours we provided in terms of the council staff and work something through those lines. So for example, last year in the Cloughed District, they provided seven hours a day instead of eight hours a day. We're not that keen on dropping equipment, so for example, the easiest answer is Warrington, we would go out with two lifeguards and not have an IV there. As some of you will be well aware, two years ago, there was a large IV rescue out of Warrington Beach and that can happen at any stage, so we'd like to deliver that in the next. That equipment requires two people to operate it, so we allow one person to stay on the beach, but it was continually delivered.
Thank you.
councillor Hawke?
Thank you, thanks Stu. Is there any difference in terms of the training and the calibre of the lifeguards that are volunteers and those that are paid?
They go through the same training. We put more situation management into our paid staff because it's traditionally less people on. So we run on the minimum requirements, which the volunteers do, but traditionally if you go to St Clair on a nice day, they might have 15, 16 people on patrol. On an average day, they might have six or seven because they've got members who just go to the beach. We can't afford that, so we continue with three, so we try and put a lot more situation management into the staff.
Are weekends not generally busier, beach times?
Yes, you could say so in school holidays, they're about the same, but the Monday to Friday is only purely during school holidays.
councillor Waugh?
Thanks, Stu. How do other city councils around the country fund it? For example, New Plymouth, do they put money into this programme?
Oh, I can't speak on New Plymouth specifically, but I presume it's a southern region, so the Christchurch puts in, the components that are one of the areas to calculate and a country council to cover their own component.
Similar dollar per population?
Very similar. I think Christchurch runs at about $36, $35 per hour service and the Dunedin City Council ones that runs around about $38 per hour service, just purely because Christchurch's got twice the number of beaches that IV places.
Okay, so there, do you know what sort of dollar value they're putting?
They've got two, last year, $213,000.
Thank you. Thank you, Stu.
Thank you very much.
You're sure there is good data. Chief. Christopher Lebrun.
Page 931.
931, welcome, Christopher.
Thank you, Dave. I'm a former European Commission negotiator and European parliamentary candidate in Brussels and London. What's the most important thing in the world? It's people. It's people. It's people. So says the social wellbeing strategy. Are people important because they can be killed and tortured profitably, or because there's a special intrinsic quality to human life? At present, the council invests in funds that kill people. Its draft annual plan document dismissed ethical investment as unsound and unworthy. Councillors, you have to make a decision about whether the council should be ethical or not. You have to take this decision, knowing that the text and the draft plan was dishonest and misleading. I have four points. Firstly, on genuine consultation. Secondly, on keeping the status quo. Thirdly, on forward-thinking ethical investment. And fourthly, my conclusion, setting up a working group. Firstly, genuine consultation. We are told the council now needs feedback from you, our city's residents, to tell us what you see as important. Unless you genuinely do listen, rather than going through the motions of listening, to tick the consultation box, so to speak, community engagement becomes similar to that in North Korea. Are you really interested in taking note of what people have to say? If we want to make Dunedin a better place to live and work, genuine engagement requires a process of transparent consultation and feedback. It requires inviting contributions in the best public spirit of impartiality and then, and only then, of finalising the policy after consultation. Secondly, keeping the status quo. Just face it, killing people is very, very profitable. Look at the growth of the arms industry around the world. Look at those industries polluting the commons without being held to account for their pollution. Good money is being made from manufacturing weapons, selling mercenary services and investing in drugs, poison and alcohol. If council investments are just focused on maximising returns, even at the expense of people around the planet, I can see accountants jumping for joy at the money earned. Good financial performance is critical and as councillors, you are right to demand the highest standards in investing, but above-average financial performance is no longer enough. Does Dunedin have to support destroying the lives of innocent people, their families and their communities? Does it have to continue supporting oil drilling, even though there are now over 200 dead ocean zones around the world? Thirdly, forward-thinking ethical investment. This uses quadruple bottom-line accounting, people, planet, profit and purpose. Purpose covers cultural and ethical dimensions. If Hillside had used quadruple bottom-line accounting, its factory would still be making trains. So I invite you all to invest, I know, I invite the council to invest in all schools and public buildings in Dunedin, putting in solar power and light wells. Learn from Germany, where with less solar intensity than Dunedin, they get 49% of their energy from solar and returns to the council, to the country. Secondly, invest in new trains for the Tari Gorge Railway and require that all cruise ship passengers travel into Dunedin by train rather than bus. Both are examples, both, sorry, both examples are winners under the quadruple bottom-line accounting system and earn good returns. Fourthly, and finally, set up an independent working group. This would investigate comprehensively the options for ethical investing. Do we continue maximising investment returns and making misery for some, or instead support wellbeing via quadruple bottom-line accounting? Robust and impartial terms of reference will be needed. The group will need to be resourced so that people can give their best. It will need to meet five to six times and report back to you with recommendations. In summary, you invited council residents to say their piece and you assure us that you genuinely do want to listen and take note. I urge the council to consider quadruple bottom-line accounting in ethical investment to build a strong, vibrant and dynamic community. This will give returns that are long-lasting. Set up, please, an independent working group to consider carefully the options available and to make informed recommendations for the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councillors, questions? councillor Stan?
I just wondered whether you were aware that informally councillors had a policy of not investing in armaments or in tobacco.
Well, I saw the, when I filled in the form, the implication was that, from the text, which I've not been able to see since, it's on the label online, since, the implication was that there was room for armaments and tobacco.
No. So the process that we're doing is actually wanting to take this to a formal policy and we're wanting to understand, apart from tobacco and armaments, I guess, which we've had an informal policy on, which other things people thought were so. You know, I think you need to tell us the areas that you have of just where you see us as a city not investing.
Well, it's fantastic what you're saying, to say, part of the thing is, partly, we can learn from this. When you submit to the plan, usually around the world, you get a, the text you submit comes back to you. Currently, it doesn't come back to you in Dunedin, so I inadvertently pressed return and then it was sent before I was ready, so that's why I wanted to come and speak. It's great what you say. I think you know my views and just, you know, if there is no investment in, you know, armaments and poison and drugs, fantastic, that's good, then the work's done.
Thank you. Thank you, Christopher. Appreciate your submission. Mr Hall, does he appear here? Vivian Kerr. Welcome, Vivian.
Hello, my name's Vivian Kerr, I'm a local dentist and I work across the road. I'm here today to ask the council to look at reversing the change they made last year and to reinstate fluoridation of Dunedin's water supply at the level of 1/5 million. Advocating for community water fluoridation is something my family's been doing for a long time. My great-uncle Basil Bibby graduated from the Otago Dental School in 1927 and he went on to become the director of the Eastman Dental Centre in Rochester, New York. He was one of the first researchers to document the dental health of people who lived in places with naturally occurring fluoride in their water. And his research went on to show that fluoride reactions with the tooth surface would help prevent dental decay. About 50 million people worldwide drink water that has a natural fluoride level around 1/5 million and they've done so for generations. For example, in hardly called North East England, fluoride occurs in the water naturally at 1/5 million. People have been drinking that water for hundreds of years and there's no evidence they've suffered harm to their general health from doing so. Another great-uncle of mine, Bruce Bibby, also a dentist, was director of the diversion of dental hygiene in New Zealand from 1955 to 1961, and he oversaw the school dental service. He spoke in support of fluoridation at the 1957 Royal Commission of Inquiry on the fluoridation of public water supplies. 57 years later, I'm here to talk to you with the same message. Community water fluoridation at 1/5 million is effective. Community water fluoridation at 1/5 million is safe. And community water fluoridation helps to give children from all backgrounds stronger teeth for life. Teeth have a hard enamel outer shell and if fluoride is incorporated at the time the enamel is forming, that enamel will be more resistant to decay for the entire life of the tooth. Fluoride applied to the surfaces of the teeth after they're erupted from fluoride in the water and from toothpaste, also continues to protect teeth. Now, there are years of studies clearly showing that water fluoridation at 1/5 million is effective and making teeth more resistant to decay. In a recent study in 2009, Ministry of Health carried out a survey of the oral health in cylinders. That study found 29% more tooth decay in adults living in non-fluoridated areas compared to those that had fluoride. That 2009 New Zealand study also found that children who did not have fluoride in their water had 60% more decay than children living in fluoridated areas. Community water fluoridation is effective. Now, opponents of fluoridation make a lot of claims about fluoride being bad for health. Their claims are not supported by authoritative peer-reviewed evidence published in the scientific literature. For over 50 years, many countries, including New Zealand, have been supplementing naturally occurring fluoride in the water to bring the level up to 1/5 million. In addition to the millions of people who have naturally occurring fluoride in their water, another 400 million people worldwide drink water that has been supplemented with fluoride. Population studies and independent reviews have consistently failed to find evidence that fluoride in the water at 1/5 million has any deleterious effect on general health. One of the issues the opponents of fluoride often bring up is dental fluorosis. Dental fluorosis can cause discoloration on the surfaces of teeth, but it's just one of many causes of discoloration of teeth. Mild fluorosis appears as barely visible pearly white flecks of the teeth. Teeth that show these markings of fluorosis are also hard and are resistant to decay. The 2009 New Zealand oral health survey found no one with severe fluorosis. And instantly, levels of mild to moderate fluorosis were actually higher in the non-fluoridated areas, and they thought this was because people were trying to dose themselves with fluoride tablets and getting it wrong. The most common cause of discoloration of teeth that I've come across, nearly 30 years of practising dentistry in Dunedin, is decay. Decayed teeth need dental treatment. Mild fluorosis doesn't require any treatment. Dental decay is often associated with low associated comic status. For a lot of reasons, not all children in our community are given a healthy diet, fluoride toothpaste and help to clean their teeth. Research has shown that community water fluoridation helps to give children from all backgrounds stronger teeth. So in conclusion, I'm asking councillors to support the fluoridation of Dunedin's water supply at a rate of 1/5 million. Thank you for the opportunity to make this matter.
Thank you. You happy to take questions?
Yep.
councillor Van.
We recently had a number of experts from the dental school come and give us information similar to what you've presented now, and they focused very much on local tests and experimentation. They did however have one graph which showed all the European countries, and there was no difference in the dental health of the countries in Europe. I was speaking of Germany, 88 million, France, many more millions in fact than the 400 million you talk about having fluoridated water. There was no difference in the dental health of fluoridated countries and the non-fluoridated countries. And in fact, most of mainland Europe who used to fluoridate their water supplies now no longer do, and they have better dental health than we will ever have. How do you counter that?
I'm looking, well, the, there are some places that use fluoridation in terms of other supplements such as salt and things like that. I'm not as familiar with the study that you mentioned.
I'm just councillor Van to this, actually.
If you don't mind, councillor Thompson, just to put a little light on that, I've been studying this since 1987. It's extensive.
Can we stick to questions, councillor?
I apologize. Thank you.
I can't, I'm not a dental researcher, I do not have time to review all the articles that come out, and I have had a chance to look at the New Zealand study, which shows the New Zealand situation. So there are a lot of different reasons as to why people have decayed teeth and not have decayed teeth, there's diet, there's oral hygiene, there's many, many reasons why there can be variations of dental decay. And in New Zealand, the study that we most recently had done by our Ministry of Health shows it helps.
Oh, I agree.
So I don't know, I don't see why we should decide to ignore that and go with the study from the other side of the world.
Okay. If I can put the question differently, then you talked about 400 million people around the world having fluoridated water. In fact, it's less than 5% of the world population. Would you not, in answer to your question about why you would look further than the New Zealand study, would you not agree that far larger populations where hundreds of millions of people were involved rather than thousands, as in most of the cases here in New Zealand, where those hundreds of millions of studies, would they not have more relevance than the small numbers that we can invariably only deal with here in New Zealand?
I'm not sure, hundreds of millions of studies. A lot of people around the world don't have reticulated water supply, so I mean, I'm not sure how many people actually receive water that way. There'll be many millions and billions of people who are not on water schemes where water could even be fluoridated.
I'm talking about Europe where this is just the case. Do you not see any value in actually looking at the really big numbers and the countries in the world that actually have the best dental hygiene?
There is certainly value in looking at studies from all over the world, and I understand that that is done by our Ministry of Health and by other things, there are many general reviews of, sorry. There had been a lot of studies showing fluoride is effective in the water.
Thank you. councillor Pate.
Thank you, Vivian. Given that you have, you're advocating 1/5 million as an effective and safe level of supply, how would you regard anything less than that, I think 0.7 or 0.5 or?
I understand that it needs to be above 0.7 to be effective and that the fluoridation levels vary slightly over the extent of the fluoridated area of the water supply, so as I understand it, the level of 0.7 means that there are times when there will not be a therapeutic effect of dose.
councillor Van.
Thank you for your submission. Would you, are you in a position to comment on the general views of your dentist colleagues in the city in terms of the majority position? Are you aware of that?
I'm aware that most of my colleagues are in support of water fluoridation.
When you say most, would that be a bare majority or would it be a strong majority in support of this water treatment?
I haven't surveyed them, I was at a recent seminar on fluoridation where a lot of dentists were in attendance, as I understand. So I do not have any scientific surveys on it, but I understand that most of my professionals are in favour of it. Whereas it's something that, I mean, financially dentists surely should be opposed to fluoridation, it doesn't give us all the work. If people don't have fluoride in the water, they'll get more decay and financially we could get off, but in actual fact, most of us are advocating for it in public health.
Most of you are professionals interested in public health.
Good idea.
councillor McTach.
Surprisingly unselfish. Mine's similar to councillor Pate. I was just seeking to understand, we're currently targeting 0.75, which is within the MOH guidelines. However, your concern is that there may be times when it falls below 0.7, but not affect that, we're at 0.75.
No, if it was at 0.75 and it was meant that people at the very end of the water line got that dose, that would be okay, but as I understand it, that means that it can drop below, so I wasn't quite sure why the council decided to drop the dose and perhaps could be put back up.
Thank you.
councillor Hawke.
Thank you, thanks Vivian. You're aware, I take it, that there are parts of the upgraded Dunedin area whose water supply isn't fluoridated at all?
Yes, I am, because I've worked for the city for a long time and there's parts that have better oral hygiene, possibly as a result of that.
So in your opinion, should we be looking at extending the coverage of our fluoridation scheme to cover the entire city area?
As a dentist, I think that would be a good idea. I understand that water schemes are very expensive, there's a lot of work involved in them, but I think ideally, yes, I'd like as many people as possible receiving the protection that fluoride can affect.
Thank you very much for your submission.
Thank you.
daryl Hall, how do you wish I? Oh, Ruby, welcome.
Hi.
This is 224, page 224, councillor. Welcome, Ruby.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Daryl's name is here, so we're welcome.
Okay, yeah.
Right, the next 10 minutes.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd really like to thank you all for the opportunity to be able to speak today. So Kia ora, my name is Ruby Sikkamossner and I am the current president of the Otago University Students Association. I would just like to highlight, there was one wee typo in our submission, where it said that we wanted to discourage students to sign a 12-year lease with their landlords. Obviously, we're meaning 12 months discouraging that, but we would encourage all our students to stay in Dunedin for 12 years. Also just. Yeah. Oh, yeah, we were trying to discourage signing the lease for a certain amount of time, but yeah. The three points that I wanted to talk about, because our submission does communicate many of the points that we were trying to highlight, is the Moana Pool and the roads in the north Dunedin region, and also the Fort South Bar Stadium. In terms of the Moana Pool, an issue that some of the students have been facing and something that was highlighted in our student magazine, The Critic, is that students are having to pay $20 to get a form from the university that states that they are a student because their student ID isn't sufficient enough. We believe that it's a harm for, like, it's annoying for the students to have to pay the extra $20 when their student ID should be enough to prove that they are a student and that the discount shouldn't necessarily be only targeted at full-time students because with your part-time or full-time, we believe that you should be entitled to that discount. Obviously, one of the benefits of that is that the students are able to lead a balanced lifestyle, they're able to have that sporting activity to break up for the study. It also will promote a greater engagement with the Dunedin community. The students will feel more involved and active and obviously being able to really utilise the benefits that the council has to offer for citizens in Dunedin. I also wanted to touch on the roadings, especially in the north Dunedin region. We believe as well that a benefit of having, revamping this road structure and redeveloping that kind of urban area will hopefully promote more social, positive social behaviour with the students. Obviously, the housing system is something that we're really working on and we're really pleased to see the current WAF structure that's going on. But we think that, you know, if the roading is clean, if we can target the road cycling issues, which we have been working on with a number of people involved in the Dunedin City Council, then this will promote a respected environment and hopefully, once they respect the environment, they'll be more engaged in social behaviour. And then I also wanted to touch on the stadium. We're really, really happy to be able to have this relationship and especially being able to utilise this area is really beneficial for getting higher numbers for our events but also safer events for our students. So I'd really like to thank that. We'd also like to see maybe some research to see, like, the student participation and kind of seeing maybe in terms of that the district finance has some specific, more involvement with the students in that kind of sense. But otherwise, yeah, we're really happy. And again, thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you, Ruby. Questions? councillor Hawke.
On the pool, and you, other sources submitted on it about the price
but also safer events for our students. So I'd really like to thank that. But I'd also like to see maybe some research to see, like, um, the student participation and kind of seeing maybe, um, in terms of that, the district finance stuff in specific, and more involvement with the students in that kind of sense. But otherwise, yeah, we're really happy. And again, thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you Ruby. Questions councillor Wilson.
Um, on the pool, um, and you, um, others have submitted on it about the price for students as well. Um, if you can't get student card, whether it's not, can't get it. If there was a discount, if, we've got capacity issues at the pool, but there's sometimes when it's not used as well. If, if it was a reduction to provide, but you had to go within certain timeframes, would that be something susceptible? Or would you want it to be the same hours as available now?
Um, yeah, it would be beneficial to allow it to be the same hours. Just because I guess generally with stu-, like, obviously, yeah, when you've got this study time and stuff, I guess peak time is generally a peak time for everyone. Um, yeah.
Any questions councillors? Councillor Hawke.
Thank you, thanks Ruby. Um, can I just ask what is, if there is a difference in the service levies paid by part and full-time students?
No.
Thank you. Um, and the survey of satisfaction with council services?
Yes.
Is that broken down into those students who used the services in the first place? Because it could easily be conflated with use. The fact that because they're not using these services, then the satisfaction with that service probably isn't that high. For example, thirty-eight percent satisfaction of going to the Otago Settlers Museum seems to go against the current general feeling about how that service is currently operating. I just, I'm just wondering whether that, are broken down any further?
Um, no, I do believe it was just a matter of, um, we just kind of got the students to, we didn't take into account how many times they've been using that service or anything. Um, but that could be something that we could potentially look into further if it was something that you really did wanna see.
Yeah, cool. Thank you. Councillor McTach.
Ruby, thanks. Um, just querying the composting trial that you guys are interested in. Is that something that, um, OUSA would be interesting, interested in trialling with DCC support?
Definitely.
Yeah, so, um, it, it could be more of a partnership approach than the DCC trialling the composting scheme. It could be a conversation with you guys about potentially you guys being the lead partner in that and us supporting that in some way?
Yeah, yeah, um, it's definitely, um, something that I think we've been working on already with, um, I think it's Catherine? Yeah, we just had a meeting with her and also our sustainability officer at OUSA. So we are really positive about kind of engaging that because I think there's a number of students that are actually really keen to kind of see the benefit of using their green rice and things.
Yeah, cool.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Thompson.
Look, I was just following up on councillor Hawkins' point. Would you consider in your survey next year putting a, a primary question beside each of these? Have you used the following service? Have you used or visited the following service this year? If so, what was your level of satisfaction?
Yeah.
Because I mean, we, you know, you look at this feedback and you would say, we've got a big problem there, but possibly we don't have a big problem there.
Yeah, we can definitely do that, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Stiles.
Yes, I understand that the OUSA does levy students. For, but some of that levy goes towards getting access for students to subsidised rates or those sorts of things. Have you considered doing that with Moana Pool? So including Moana Pool as something for which you levy that then results in the students getting a better rate?
Um, no, I haven't necessarily considered that yet, no.
Can I clarify there? I understand that it's not the Students' Association that levies now, it's the university and they redistribute the fund. So that the fee that used to be, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fee that used to be paid directly from the student to the University Students' Association now is collected by the university? And the university contracts the association, is that correct?
Yeah, that does sound more correct, yeah, because I wasn't quite sure about your view. Yep.
So just a question, does that mean that the university could levy to?
I'm, I'm not an expert, I just know that the university then distributes that money by way of sometimes a contract by to the University Students' Association, is that councillor Hawkins' view probably more favourable?
Yeah, it's levied by the university and then bulk funded to the Students' Association through their service level agreement is how it currently works. So that FSM debate kind of became moot. And that wasn't my, well, I was gonna clarify that, but that wasn't my question. Um, in two thousand and, it reiterates a point in your two thousand and thirteen submission. Um, one of the risks of the Stadium Events Attraction Fund is the crowding out of private use of the stadium, um, highlighting that the days that OUSA wanted to use it for orientation were already booked. Given that the high number of days during the year where it isn't in use, is it not so much a crowding out as just bad timing and a lack of forward planning? And I realise that you were hamstrung to a degree in that planning by when the university set their dates for the following year, but, um, it does, crowding out by, crowding out of private use does seem a little heavy-handed.
Yeah, um, yeah, I guess maybe that would be something to consider. Um, obviously, yeah, we are kind of like due with orientation events like that, it's kind of out of our control due to with the university and dates that they set. Um, but we do definitely try to plan ahead, like, as soon as reorientation finishes, we're focusing on orientation dates and finalising that. So we are always trying to make sure that we are planning ahead and we are getting the numbers kind of as soon as possible.
Generally speaking, how far in advance do you know what the semester dates will be for the following academic year?
I'm not sure of the exact dates, but, um, yeah, it's, it'll be in the second, so, in the second semester, that's when the university is kind of thinking about it, kind of thing, and starting to plan along.
And we're just going back to the fees for Moana Pool.
Yes.
And the requirement for students to get a certificate from the university to show that they're a student. Is that certificate to show that they are a full-time student as opposed to a part-time student or just that they're a student?
Just a student, I think, it's probably, I think it does detail whether they're full-time or part-time, but.
What I'm getting at is, you've put out two issues and I'm wondering if they're connected. One is the requirement, or the requirement to get a certificate in addition to your ID card for, you want a better term?
Yeah.
And the other is that part-time students are not given the same discount as full-time students. And I'm wondering if one is being used to prove the other.
I think, yeah, because we need to get the form that will state whether you're a full-time or part-time student. So that's kind of, yeah.
So if one were addressed, it would resolve possibly?
Yeah, that would be, yeah.
Could I add something for clarity? Um, one of the issues that we had, or the university has, is that the student ID card, you can either start here, so you want just a summer school, um, and you can keep it for a whole year, but you might not enrol, or will be enrolled for the rest of the year. So that means that when this is being presented around town, that student might not actually be a student. They might have only done actually quite a short period at the university, but they've got a full year card, so.
Yeah, I guess that's probably more of an issue to do with the university though, and like it shouldn't be really a issue for the students.
And the university does not collect your card back in, or does it? It's a matter of course on a annual basis, so.
Yeah, so maybe that would be something to draw to the university's attention. And like, I think we'd be happy to do that, but at the same rate, it would be disappointing that all the students would miss out on an easier transition.
Richard, thank you Ruby, for your submission.
Thank you very much for your time, thank you.
Michael Eifman-Gold. And, yeah, welcome. Welcome. The next tenant is the National Gymnastics Academy, in the next ten minutes are yours.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm treasurer of the Gymnastics Academy and with me I'm Fiona Jinks, who's the Regional Relationship Officer for Gym Sport New Zealand and our Coaching Director, Carmel Leslie. Um, now I did have a speech that I wrote out and prepared last night for this, but then when I was thinking it over, I thought, well, actually, what you guys need is you need to know what it is about us amongst all the sporting organisations that are coming here asking for assistance, um, that makes us stand out and will want you to support the project that we have on the table here. Now, I've handed out, um, a small bit of information, hopefully there's enough to go around. This is, I'm just briefly gonna speak to this because what, what we are is we are a large, strong and growing sporting organisation. We, um, have a very sound financial basis and we are a community-minded group. If you have a look at the information in front of you, the first part of it just demonstrates our values. We are a community organisation, um, we operate out of three gymnasiums. We've been, um, working hard since our merger in two thousand and eleven to, um, become a, I guess you'd say, a, a significant player in the gym sport community in the region. Uh, on page two, if you look at our numbers, our total gym membership has been growing year on year for the last three years. Uh, in terms of community participation on page three, you can see our external users who come into the gym. They've also been growing year on year. Um, so we do have a lot of non-gymnasts who come in and use our facilities. We have been working for the last three years with council and council staff. And we are very pleased to say that after a long period of time, we now believe we have found a site that is suitable for, um, our gymnasium development. Um, working with Logan Park High School, mountain biking in Otago and the Otago Hockey Association. What we're coming here today to ask you is, um, for your support in developing a sports hub in the area behind Logan Park High School. Um, if you carry on through the document, you'll see financially we are a sound organisation and we're grown. And we really hope that you'll get behind this initiative. What we're specifically asking is that if council considers selling the Caledonian Gymnasium and/or Bowling Club, that you look at retaining some of the money from that sale to support this initiative. Um, I'll pass you on to Fiona and Carmel.
I represent the National Sporting Organisation of Gym Sports New Zealand. We fully support the New Gymnastics Academy and their vision for this. We're having a growth explosion at the moment. In two thousand and thirteen, we had a thirteen point five percent growth in the region. We're the only region in New Zealand that had such a significant growth. We're tracking turn one of two thousand and fourteen to hit seventeen percent. We have fifteen clubs within the region, strong, DGA being the strongest club. That's why they're leading this initiative, but all clubs support this. We also significantly bring into the city a lot of people that come to our competitions. We hold all the regional competitions here. Without a gymnasium, without a big competition venue, we cannot continue where we are. We're reliant on the Caledonian and the state that it's in, we use it, we're the biggest users of it. So we're urging council to stand behind us and help us in this initiative. Thank you.
Um, I'm just here to briefly talk about the benefits of a gym sport facility in Dunedin. Um, firstly, we're the only main city in New Zealand that doesn't have a designated gym sport facility. And, um, because of our results, we're the tenth biggest club in New Zealand. Um, that's how we tracked, um, at the end of last year. And we actually have, um, a lot of waiting lists, a lot of kids on waiting lists, which is not a good position to be in. We provided, um, a pretty amazing service to the community. A lot of small providers have actually shut down for various reasons. So in some areas, we're the only people that provide, um, fundamental movement programmes to babies, mums and tops, right through the full spectrum through the community, to our senior citizens with our Set and Be Fit programmes. So, um, we also obviously provide for, um, well, a big area that we're providing for at the moment is, um, with boys. And boys perhaps that are at risk and not into your traditional sports. And we provide a programme called Parkour, which is free running, and that is one of our biggest, um, growth areas as well at the moment. Um, unfortunately, our facility is only just being able to provide for that. Um, we also, obviously, our, our vision for this is to provide a safe and warm environment for people of all ages, bubs to seniors, as I said, to come and move, strengthen, explore and train their bodies with the goal of better overall health, improving their confidence and relationship with activity whilst providing a great movement experience. That's our goal and that's what we're doing to date with over now six hundred members, paying members and two thousand casual users. Go through our three gyms. We employ up to fifty coaches who work in other sports and fitness areas across the city. We provide coach, athlete and student education opportunities which benefit, once again, other sporting codes. We offer quality fundamental movement programmes that are funded and backed by Sport New Zealand and Gym Sport New Zealand. And one of those is a programme called Move and Improve, which we're about to launch in all schools throughout the Otago region. Uh, we collaborate with other sports who can use both our facility and our knowledge to better their athletes. Uh, we provide a movement foundation for all sport in Otago. And we are constantly, well, personally, I'm constantly, um, approached by other sports and coaches to use our facility and to use our expertise in acrobatics and et cetera. Um, and we accommodate them the best we can, but once again, our facility lets us down particularly in the winter. Uh, we provide specialist, uh, coaching for coaches and athletes across Otago, from the southern steel right through down to our little, um, gym mess. Uh, we provide space for smaller sports that can't afford increasing rents and have to put up with poor conditions. And just this week, I've been approached by Salsa and another sporting code who'd like to use our stretch studio. We're leaders in providing innovative programmes for our community based on need. Two of those programmes, um, include Parkour, which I just referred to, Sport Fit, which is helping kids who are in other sporting codes wanting to become fitter, um, and particularly in core strength and conditioning and stretching. And that's right up to the professional level of sport. And as I said, we've just signed up to run a schools programme, which is really exploding because gymnastics or gym sports are not actually catered for particularly well in schools anymore for a number of reasons, equipment, expertise, they're just not there in teaching. Um, and I could talk all day on the importance of, um, fundamental movement in children's lives. And that's what we're here for and providing for. And, um, welcome to ask any questions.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson, councillor Wilson and then councillor Hawke.
Um, thank you, and a really good presentation, but I just, and I'm sorry, we have in different copies of these maps which you attached to your submission, but I'm just understanding, there are a number of submissions we've received about, um, problems car parking in Logan Park. And I appreciate we've made the hub and it's a really good successful story. But adding this, if you've got a mountain bike event on plus a regional finals, how does that work out for car parking and people getting there? Because it seems a pretty constrained site.
Yeah, mountain biking has its own submission coming in. Um, part of what you see on the map there is a car parking area that's specifically going to go in.
Over above what's there now?
Yes.
Okay, so you would have up the back, so it would actually sit in behind the gymnasium, the facility. And then there's a big car park which they are going to develop for mountain biking. And there would be, um, some car parking available around our facility as well. It's four thousand square metres, so we wouldn't require that whole area just for the facility.
Councillor Wilson.
Um, thank you. Two questions. First off, you've got a great base in South Dunedin using the Caledonian. What would happen if you moved to Logan Park with that base? How would you keep working with it because location's one of the key aspects?
Excuse me, sorry, I don't quite understand the question, keep working with the Caledonian?
So if you sell the, we sell the Caledonian, we invest the funds into a new facility?
Yes.
How do you keep working with the South Dunedin community?
They would, the, the new facility would cater for all of, all of Dunedin.
The essence of getting from, like, one of the big advantages of the Caledonian is its location in South Dunedin.
The Caledonian is the main competition venue for gym sports and it's the home for two rhythmic clubs. Um, one of them is our club and one is Greater Green Island Gymnastics Club. The main part of DGA is slightly to the north, um, behind the railway station and also on Vogel Street by Dixsmiths. Dunedin's a reasonably small place. Dunedin's a reasonably small place and has good bus services all the way down there. We don't expect it would have a major impact.
Okay. And what would you say to the members of the Caledonian Bowling Club that you would endorse selling that facility?
Well, it's not, it's not our decision to sell that facility. All we're saying is that if the council wished to proceed with that and we put a submission in on that, we would like you to consider earmarking some of the money from the sale. councillor Thompson.
Can you just explain to, for me, clearly, this, this has become, is made up of what was presumably a collection of different clubs, but from what you're saying, I gather there are still other gymnastic clubs in the Dunedin city area. So I'm wondering, clearly, you've seen an economy of scale and bringing up, being able to bring these things together. Would there be further advantage in a new facility if all of, if the clubs all came under the auspices of one umbrella? Was that not the sense?
I think in any sport, we need to, there needs to be competition. We need to be able to provide and every club provides for different parts of the community. And that's in obviously the fee structure and the type of programmes that they run. However, we would be fully supportive in all gym sports codes using the facility and of course, we will pull together when we run local competitions. So they would be using it, whether they choose to be housed there or not, is up to them.
And you're using three facilities at the moment?
That's right.
What's your total occupancy cost across those three facilities roughly at the moment?
It's reasonably cheap, roughly around about $31,000.
Yeah, sorry. Just wondering, in terms of the facility itself, is it proposed that you guys would be the owning party for that facility or would that be jointly owned by the school or the Ministry of Education or Mount Waihata or any other?
Well, at this stage, the land is owned 50% by Logan Park and 50% by the ministry and we have, at a stage where we've drawn up a heads of agreement where they're happy for us to lease it for a very small amount. And we are in the process of looking at partnerships in the facility. Yeah.
So they're, just referring to councillor Wilson's map, the actual, the one that I see that has your name on it.
Yep.
We can see the gym sports facility plus shared amenities that would cater to all three of the different partners that you're currently in conversations with.
That's right.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
councillor. Thank you. Two questions if I may. The first one follows off from your question about the Caledonia. Is there any linkage between the local community and the membership of the involvement in the activities at the Caledonian gym? Are they local people?
They come from all over Dunedin. I don't think there's a specific link. We have people who come from as far away as Waihola and even from Waikiki who come into our gyms.
And the major question was in terms of facilities, I mean, we're talking about expensive, big gymnasio型 facilities, there are a lot of them at schools and no doubt you've explored capacity issues there. Are you telling us that there's actually no capacity in this number of quite new school gyms around the place or the Eka Centre that would be better than developing a new standalone location?
Yes, that's what we're saying. If we had looked at a number of school gymnasiums, the problem with them is that they use by schools and a wide range of community groups all the time. We need to have our equipment set up, it requires floor plates, a lot of it's heavy, a lot of it's bulky. If it were to be stored away, we would need a huge storage area. We did investigate the Eka Centre with Hamish Black and at the moment, there is no capacity there for the setup we would require. We'd require the gear set up 24/7, seven days a week.
But is there no, I'm thinking of synergy around changing rooms and parking and such like, is there no capacity for, or space for what you need to be added to something like the Eka Centre so that there would be associated sales?
We've gone through that process over the last three years and with, with big focus mainly on, we looked at Sunnyvale, we looked at Bagminton Hall and the Eka Centre.
Kaita Valley.
Kaita Valley, which is just highly utilised, we couldn't get in there. And to know our gym environment is to understand why. We're quite antisocial in that from, well, during the day, it's school programmes and babies and, and as Mike alluded to, our equipment needs to be set up. We don't have enough muscle and people volunteering their time to come in and set equipment up, then run the programme, then take it down and put it away. It's, it's just not efficient use of time. And, what's it going with that?
At previous periods, straight after school.
School, yeah.
From three through till seven is absolutely critical time in any other facility we can't get into at that stage.
Or share with. We've got, we've got packed gyms in that time.
You sound very thorough.
Full capacities.
If we were to set up and break down a sprung floor, it'd probably take us half a day to do that, but fairly big and bulky. councillor.
Yeah, Michael, I like the idea of a sports hub, but I'm intrigued to see that you're looking to partner with the Otago Hockey and given that they've got a facility quite close by, to what degree would they be involved in this, in this proposal?
Hockey will be speaking directly after us, so they're probably a better place to answer that. They, I won't say too much, but they don't have capacity where they are at the moment. councillor.
Thank you. There's a couple of pretty big ifs in this plan. If we choose to sell that facility and then if we choose to relocate, reallocate some of that money to this proposal, if either of those ifs don't happen, do you have, are you confident that you have a plan to make this work anyhow? Because chances are that it won't cover the cost of the facility.
Absolutely, yeah. That's our goal, is to raise these funds and make this happen. Pretty driven group. Where we can get any kind of assistance, we think, we believe we're doing a pretty good job in the community, providing for activity and fundamental movement. And it seems to have a pretty positive spin off. I mean, every week, we're getting emails from people who are moving into the area, particularly young families, saying we want to get our children involved in gym sports. And so we believe that we will find the backing, but where we can get council support, open arms.
If the Caledonian, if you moved out of there or that became deaccessioned or what have you, are there other facilities available to the community of South Dunedin to take up gym sports that perhaps for a variety of reasons, we're going to access the Logan Park side?
Trying to think, there is no specific gym club and anyone that's actually using facilities comes into town at this point. The people that are actually using the Caledonian are in the rhythmic area and they're a smaller percentage of our club. There's only 40 out of the 300, sorry, 600 members use the Caledonian for rhythmic. Then there is another club, Green Island Rhythmic. So just for all of you that don't understand gym sports, it is actually made up of aerobics, trampolining, rhythmic, artistic men's, artistic women's and, and then all our non-competitive programmes, which are numerous.
Are you far advanced enough to know any ballpark figures of what you expect this is going to cost?
Yeah, probably around $4,000. Yeah.
That was the original costing that we received from council staff. With the hub development, I expect it to be a bit more than that, but there'll be other advantages with the hub. We'll have wider community support, a number of organisations contributing and that sort of thing.
Can I, can I just hark back to the options that you had or investigated and just to eliminate the one that was identified when, I think it was about 18 months ago, when we looked at first the possibility of selling the Caledonian and the possibility of simply using the funds to put the facility, the benefits of it in another place was canvassed then around this table. And the one location that was identified was next to the Ice Stadium. In other words, building something next to the Ice Stadium to utilise, among other things, the heat from the refrigeration part, et cetera. So just to eliminate that, can you tell me where, is the reason that it's better to Logan Park because you, you can get the Hockey Association, you can get Mountain Biking Otago in as well rather than that side?
I think that it is more central, so it is better for more of our members to be there and we can tap into other, other areas around there. So that sport hub mentality, where we've got our athletics coaches just across the road with the Caledonian, a lot of our gym kids use running, well, they need to run, so we can share there. And other sporting codes who can come in, use our stretch studio, use our expertise and vice versa. So that is the real main reason. The, the reason we went away from the Ice Stadium car park area was the, the size of it, the size it was allocated in that car park would have, we would have outgrown it fairly rapidly. So.
Plus, there's the ongoing concern from a number of people with a risk of erosion.
That was the other.
Thank you. I'm going to eliminate that. Any further, any further questions? Thank you very much for your submission.
Thank you.
And now we'll get another view on this, the Otago Hockey Association. Rachel Mountain Smith.
You need to pull that down quite close to you. More to my level. Thank you to the councillors for considering the Otago Hockey Association submission. My name's Rachel Mountain Smith, I'm the general manager and I undertook my role in October last year. You involved with my submission and I'd just like to highlight the main points and explain where there are aims and challenges. I've outlined in my submission the increase in player numbers over the 2012 and 2013 years. In the 2014 year, most of our competitions have now already started, we have increased our numbers again. Our summer numbers recorded at the end of March, we're up by 107 players and our winter season, up by another 184 players across the open secondary and junior grades. We have extended our playing hours for the club competition during the weekends to allow for these extra teams, which has actually also reduced time that other groups are able to access the turf. We've also had to cap the number of boys team in our secondary school competitions, 22 teams, which unfortunately has meant this year, we've had to turn teams away that wish to play. Even with this cap, our games start at 3:30 in the afternoon and the last game finishes at 9:30 in the evening. Both of these times are fairly inconvenient for children having to leave school to arrive on time for their first game and then obviously that late finish at either end when they've got school the next day. It is however, our junior players that do suffer the most. From intermediate grades all the way down to our year ones, we struggle to find adequate time to take the increasing numbers of players that want to play hockey. In order to fit in all of our teams, we've had to hire out alternative venues to take these extra teams. That's an extra cost of us of around about $2,000 a year. That may not seem like a lot, but when you're a non-profit organisation, that's a huge amount. We are lucky that these venues are available to us, but because they're in various locations around Dunedin and parents are finding it incredibly difficult to transport their children to those venues. Often you find in hockey, you've got siblings that play, they're all different ages and a certain age group will be in one venue and then another age group will be all the way across town at a different venue and parents are struggling. That's a lot of feedback I've had from just our first week of competition. This problem's only going to continue to get worse. We've had a huge increase in our junior players. This is due to the popularity of our Small Sticks Programme, which is our Hockey New Zealand initiative. We've had an extra 15 teams enter that competition from the years three to eight. It's now at capacity. I was really lucky to manage to fit everyone in as it was. If I'd had one more team, I would have had to turn them away. So we've got no more space and that's including those extra venues. Our Fun Sticks Programme, which is for year one and two, we had to cap those numbers last year at 80 players. Again, we had no more space for them, no one could take them and we didn't have room for them at our tar. And I could probably envisage the same happening again this year. We haven't had the final registrations in for that yet. And while all of this is going on, I haven't mentioned the fact that our Small Stick in School Programme, which is where we go and deliver four sessions to primary schools and intermediate schools around Dunedin, we've taken up another further four schools this year, which actually translates to another 1,172 children in total on top of what we're already delivering to. So we'll be delivering in schools to 2,281 players. If you translate that to them all continuing wanting to play hockey in the future, we're going to have some real problems as to, you know, have all these children and know where to put them. We've now got a dedicated community hockey manager and we're about to look at getting a coach dedicated to increasing participation and setting up programmes to upskill our young players. We've not had things like that in the past. Otago Hockey have kind of been a little bit more concentrating on high performance and since I've taken up my role, I've changed that focus. Now I'm solely looking at junior and upscaling from grassroots level. So we're introducing these junior programmes, which again, will hopefully encourage more players to come and play and also retain players that we may previously have lost. Quite often you'll find they drop off at secondary school level, so we're trying to keep those on board so that the need for space has become very apparent. Unfortunately as well, hockey's a sport that needs to be played on a specialised surface. You can't really play on grass veils, it doesn't translate well onto when they're actually going into playing competition, it's a completely different game. We need more artificial turf surfaces so we can give our young players the hockey experience they deserve. As you'll have heard from Gym Sports and read in your submission from us, there is a plan underway for making more space available at the back of Logan Park. This will form a larger sports hub with Mountain Biking Otago and Gym Sport Otago alongside Logan Park High School itself. At this stage, we're only seeking the support of council for this project. If those plans should progress significantly, there may be the need to assist with various aspects, looking at different ways in order to make this become a reality. We would hope to work closely with all parties to create a vibrant community facility that can be used by many parties. This isn't a facility that's for professional sports people, it's not a facility that's for high performance sports people, this is for everyday Dunedin residents to be able to use, to come along, you know, and it's not even if we're looking to surface the turf, it's not just going to be for hockey. This can be used by touch, it can be used by league, union, footsol, just a really great practice space for people. Our capacity is in the winter. During the day, school would be able to use it and over the summer, a number of sports would be able to use it. Even in the winter, we wouldn't be looking to use it every single evening, so it would be available for all. I have had, been speaking to Tiger Turf, they also assured me that this surface can also be used for car parking. So to answer another question, that's extra capacity car parking for other events. So it's, you know, it would be such a benefit to the community. It would be great to be able to share, you know, ideas with other codes and start working together with other sporting codes. It's been really refreshing to approach, you know, Mountain Biking Otago, Gym Sports and, you know, have them willing to, to work with Otago Hockey. And we all share the same vision that we're trying to do the best for, for our residents and for our young people. Obviously combining facilities and sharing costs will also make the project, you know, worthwhile for everybody. Moving on to some of the other parts of my submission, and I only touched on them briefly because it's not something that we're looking for right now. I know hockey in the past sometimes has asked last minute for things, so I wanted to put some things on the radar of the council now. We have, our tarps last for between 10 and 12 years. We need to long-term plan for the replacement of these. We did, and we have introduced a player levy, which is a $10 tarf levy per player and that goes into a separate account which is set aside specifically. And that goes into a separate account, which is set aside specifically for resurfacing our tars. However, we will have the need to replace one of our tars in five years' time. We already get council support, but it would be nice that if you were made aware that in five years' time that another turf will need to be replaced. And lastly, we've mentioned our desire for a third water turf and an upgraded facilities in line with our 10 to 15 year strategic plan. Whilst we're aware that this subject matter has come up on occasion before, we are now more than ever realising the future necessity of being able to plan for a third turf. We're seeing an increasing number of tournaments that have specific requirements in terms of hosting eligibility. And we are finding that we cannot meet those requirements due to facility and space constraints. Already, we will no longer be eligible for tier one and tier two secondary school tournaments, and one of which we have this year. And this will be the last year we'll get that in the Federation Cup, which is the premier Dunedin school, sorry, national school of our competition. We will never get that again. Hockey New Zealand has just changed the structure of that competition. And now to be able to host that, you must have three tars. And that's also true of the National Masters tournaments. And these are tournaments that would bring in a lot of money and they bring a lot of supporters with them. It's not just the teams. And the list of facilities required to host national tournaments is well out of our grasp. Things like seating, video towers, stuff that we just don't have space or the resources for. Whilst the surface would need to be hockey-specific to an FIH specification, we would be more than willing to share this surface with other codes. Already at our own tars, we share with rugby league teams. And we've got the All Blacks that have made several bookings with us for their upcoming test match because they want to have a chance to run out of practice on a stable turf. We have the Tago rugby team come to use the Highlanders. We have several. It's not just hockey that benefit at the moment, there's other sporting organisations. And we would definitely look at how we could utilise our current buildings so that we could again share with other sporting codes and create another type of sporting hub. Aside from the tournaments, it's in our strategic plan to continue growing our game in Dunedin. If we're unable to secure a third turf to play full competition games on, our younger generation of players will have nothing to play on, they'll have nothing to aspire to, we'll have no room for them and nowhere to play, we'll be out of space. Hockey is one of the top 10 sports growth according to Sport New Zealand. It's gaining huge popularity. The Hockey World Cup again is this year and then with the Olympics coming up in 2016, I would imagine again, we're going to see a huge amount of growth. Our teams are in the top seven in the world, which is really great. Children watch it, it's a gender-neutral sport. You can make it all the way if you're male or female. You know, it's a great thing for kids to be able to. We already have black sticks that are from Dunedin and then the junior black sticks as well. So children here can see that they can aspire to go all the way to the top. So we would be very grateful if council could consider to support our future plans in your long-term planning.
Thank you, Rachel. councillor Wilson.
What you didn't cover off and I'm slightly aware of, but I'm not sure recently what the situation is. What hours do people start playing in the morning in order to get training time during the week? And what time are there's training till at night on the current facilities we've got?
There are several in schools and rec teams that start at 7:30 in the morning to be able to get that turf time. And we have teams and clubs and clubs that have young players and then that they practise right the way through till 10 o'clock at night. We don't have, there is not one evening in the winter where we're not used through till 10, 3:30 till 10. And then people have to practise lunchtimes, mornings, anywhere that they can. Weekends or club competitions. And we're even finding schools practising after club competition is finished just so they can get the turf time.
councillor Benton.
Thank you. What level of discussions have you had with the city parks people and other people on area around possibilities for more turf adjacent to your current turf?
I know there had been a lot of discussions before I had come on board in my role. And we have been talking a lot with council regarding this third turf. I understand that this is a huge project to undertake. And our real need at the moment, and my focus at the moment, is to find somewhere else for the juniors to play and other teams to practise. This doesn't require a third turf at the moment. So most of my energies have been going into finding this additional space for them to practise, which is where Logan Park High School's come in.
Just in terms of the proposed site and further up the valley, are you concerned about issues in respect of sunlight in that area?
We are looking, and I have looked into having lights at that facility. So you would be able to have those lights on. And we would be wanting to use it from half past three through to whatever time. And so we would require lighting there.
But just that I have a concern that I think is what found that that area might be because of its nature and the valley and its proximity to the bush, quite a cold area for a lot of the year.
Yeah, it is quite cold. But I don't know if you've ever actually come down to the hockey turf where we are presently. It is also very cold. I have been down in that on a number of occasions where turf is actually frozen over after nine o'clock at night. So I wouldn't imagine it to be any worse than where we are presently.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. Just so I'm clear, including the third water turf, is the ambition to eventually have four turs?
To have three turs. The tars at the back of Logan Park wouldn't be full-sized, they're practice tars. And so it would be three water tars in total and the additional space at Logan Park High School.
Right. Because it seems like there's more demand than can be met by two turs. But if you're willing to open it up to other codes, there's not enough demand from hockey for three?
It's not so much that there's not enough demand from hockey. It's we'd be to find a way for it to work whereby we could open it up. When we have, for instance, the All Blacks come to play, they come and they train during the day when our turf isn't at capacity. So it would be okay, so it's not the fact that we wouldn't be able to fill it. It's we'd be able to fill it at different times. During the summer, for instance, we don't use it at the weekends after representative hockey's finished. And so again, we'd be able to open it up to other, could be volleyball, could be marching, could be anything, you know, to share the facilities.
If you have three water turs, you're looking at $1.5 million plus inflation every 10 years to maintain those. Are you confident that the support you've already had for the facilities you currently have will be able to be scaled up to the degree that you're implying that council may be able to scale up its support for your expansion?
I definitely think, looking at the figures of the junior players that are coming through now, and if you project those on to eight years and if you manage to retain those, that's a lot more players and a lot more revenue. And we would also look at other ways of supporting ourselves. We don't want to be relying on handouts. I'm already looking at other ways to, you know, generate revenue for the turf by other different means. If we can also attract bigger tournaments, they actually bring in a lot of money for us. Hosting a tournament, for instance, even we hosted the Dunedin Masters Games, that was, you know, it's about $10,000 that we made from that and that was over four days. If we could attract more, you know, bigger events like that, that would go to some way to support and some of that as well.
And just lastly, why should we offer you interest-free loans? We offer a number of subs to the community, particularly around insulation and it's paid back by the community at admittedly low fixed interest rates. What's special about this that we should write off the interest on that altogether?
I wouldn't say special. I think hockey does a lot of what it's doing by itself. We run our facilities, we run our building, everything that we have, we're in charge of. It's an increasing sport, it's an expensive sport. And we don't want to have to pass those costs on to our members or we will lose them. And we don't want to turn it into an elitist sport either, where only the richest of us can afford to play. And already, to give you an idea, a club competition, one member average will pay about $360 to play hockey for our winter season. It's really expensive. Our representative teams are paying about $1,600 to have the privilege of going away to play for a tago. We don't want to have to continue to pass those costs on. And by having to pay the extra, that's all that will happen.
I understand that, but you realise the alternative is passing the costs on to all city residents instead?
But then we're also, we're a community facility that is open to all residents. We're not a facility that's only open to the professional sports people. We're not a facility that's only open to come and spectate and watch a particular game three times a year. It's a facility, a community facility that's open for everybody.
Not naming names, no.
Although, I'm not thinking of it in particular, but you know, that's the reality. We have people use our lounge, you know, groups come up and they use our facilities. They might want to play a game of football, they want to, you know, and we are open for all.
Thank you. councillor McTish.
A couple of questions. Thank you for your submission. And it's just bouncing off councillor Hawkins really. Are there any conversations happening at a national level about the relative viability of having a sport which is so turf-based? Because it seems to me that, I mean, I've sat here for three years now and every year there have been requests for additional support or turf-related expenses. And it doesn't seem to me that it is ever going to be likely that clubs will be able to support the kind of expenditure which is required to not only install but maintain turs of this type. So are there conversations happening at a national level about the fact that perhaps it is more viable to return to a grass-based sport? Or at least embrace that as an alternative approach, particularly for communities that don't have a whole lot of money?
There isn't any that does not get mentioned. Everything from hockey comes down from the FIH level. That then filters down to New Zealand hockey, which then filters down through the regions down to us. It's not something that has been discussed. They are basically trying to find ways to make the game faster. And they're trying to find ways to make the game more, I guess, commercial. Talking about changing the game's rules so by that you have advert rates trying to get on television. So they're definitely not moving back towards grassroots level and what they can do to, you know, make it accessible for all from a top level anyway. And I guess from our point of view, if we play players on grass, you know, they're going to, at some stage you'll have to play on turf. And you can see with the masters teams who have been used to playing on grass, they come to play on turf, they play a completely different style of hockey, it's completely different. So no, it's unfortunately not something that's happening.
The second question that I have is just about the, you say that the courts are, not courts, the turf is open to anyone that wishes to use it. I guess as someone, it's not in any way associated with hockey, my perception of that is very different from the reality. So you currently walk past a fenced-off area, you have to go through gates which have the appearance of not being open to the public in order to enter that area. And one of the challenges for council in facilitating, you guys have to access of, access to more of Logan Park is that it does give that very walled-off appearance. Are there ways in which you feel that that could be mitigated or done differently to make it feel like a more welcoming space to the whole community?
Absolutely. That's one of the things that I have been looking at since I started. Also, I've been in the job for seven months. Unless you are a hockey community member or you have, you know, a child or you're a parent, people don't really know about us very often. That's something I really want to change by getting, I guess, a bit more advertising, getting around businesses, you know, telling people about us, letting people know we're there. And that's part of my plan at the moment. And we have a summer league to like for football and for hockey. It'd be great to like open that up to businesses and make people more aware of where we are and welcome people. Unfortunately, the fences are a mess because of the, because of hockey balls and smashed windows and things like that. But yeah, no, it's definitely something that I would like to work on and make the whole Dunedin community know that we're here and that we'll welcome you all with open arms.
councillor Hawkins, do you have another?
Is sand turf no longer an option?
Not for, really for competition.
But do all three of them have to be at competition level?
If you want to host particular tournaments, they would have to all be at competition level. And if you were just looking for places for like club competition or just practise, it definitely wouldn't have to be a water turf. But yes, if you wanted those tier one, tier two secondary school tournaments, masters tournament, yeah, they do have to be water.
councillor Waugh.
Thank you. How many, what's the growth in players since 2010?
2010?
Over the last three years?
Last three years. Between 2000, as I said in my submission, we had a 9.5% increase. The juniors is where it really has taken off. The junior in 2002, I was sitting at 575 players. In 2013, that suddenly jumped to 817 players. And then this year, we're looking at about 850. So we're steadily climbing. That's people using our turf, that's not what's happening in schools and things like that. Total, at the beginning or at the end of 2008, there was 1,700 players. On 2014, the figures that we have at the moment, we've got over 2,000. So that's an increase of 300. But again, that's something that is in my particular plan is to increase participation. We have this new community hockey manager and that's all about increasing participation and encouraging people to come and play hockey and getting into all the schools and things like that. So yeah, that's one of our goals.
Okay. The reason I ask that question is because I'm on the page for the Hockey New Zealand National Facility Strategy from 2010. And it talked about optimisation levels of 600 to 850 being the tipping point for turf usage. In 2010, you're already at 900, so where do you think you are now?
Yeah, a lot higher than that, yeah, definitely.
So you're already way beyond the tipping point?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any funding from Sport New Zealand for facilities like this?
Sport New Zealand, I believe have actually, they had to put a lot of their efforts and money into high performance previously. I think they're changing that now. I'm not sure whether what's directly available to us as an association usually goes through Hockey New Zealand, a lot of Sport New Zealand funding. So I believe this goes towards their black sticks teams. There is, we do get some funding from Keane Sport, which is through that. But again, that's got a huge amount of pressure on it. They already cancelled the funding round from Sport at Tago this round because there was just too many people asking for money.
Okay. And one final question. I've just been texting one of my staff members who is a hockey player. And he tells me in Christchurch, there are a number of half-sized turs for younger teams at schools. Do you see that as being an option?
Yeah, and that's what the Logan Park project is about as well. And they're half tars basically. And that's to be able to practise and to run junior games. You only need really a half turf or a quarter turf for the junior games. And so that's what we're looking at at the moment. And we do utilise Queen's High School, who has a half turf. And we also use Balmqun. And the only problem with Queen's and Balmqun is that costs us extra. And with this Logan Park hub, that although there'll be an initial outlay, it'll be another facility that we have that's not going to, you know, cost us an extra on top of, although there'll be maintenance costs and things, I would imagine. The whole sports hub, that would be shared, but not, we'll have something that we're able to use, you know, seven days a week in the evenings, in the winter if necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Rachel, thank you for your submission. Very fortunate, thank you very much.
Thank you.
councillor Smith. Next five minutes to yours.
I'm Jack Lingliawada. I've lived on the Antago Peninsula all my life. The first 23 years I was living in McCandru Bay and then I moved to Porta Vallow. My friends would come and visit me in McCandru Bay, but after I moved to Porta Vallow, they'd most only visit it once. Their comments were always, "That road is so windy and narrow." So generally, I now... So generally, I now always travel up to McCandrew Bay or meet them in town. I've lived now in Portobello for twenty years, it hasn't changed. Other major improvements to Company Bay and McCandrew Bay have been wonderful. I look with envy at all the families out enjoying the road widening. Portobello's turn was coming, but wait, maybe not anymore. All the past meetings and consultation that was carried out a few years ago, which came up with the current plan, are being rehashed and the process revisited. I am unconvinced as to why the change of the current order of the improvements was instigated. The focus is on volume of traffic and accidents, and the favour of the moment is cyclists. The D C C is spending a lot of money throughout Dunedin City on cyclists, which is fantastic. Um, the D C C is doing, oh, yeah, but the original focus of the road widening on the peninsula, in my opinion, was communities, the residents, the schoolchildren being able to walk to school. I would like to see this focus returned. Portobello once again is being asked to wait, just like our non-existent beach. McCandrew Bay got one, well, Bay have got one. Portobello's turn was to come, but the Resilience Management Act came into being, and that was the end of that. If the current plan was to go ahead, at least the families of Portobello could walk to Broad Bay and enjoy their beach. The councillors need to be very transparent. Some of us believe the change of order has come about because there are a number of councillors who live in McCandrew Bay to town section. That is just an opinion. We as rate payers can think that, but it is you as our representatives that have to convince us that this is not the case. During the tourism season, tourism season, sorry, and the huge amount of cruise ships that are visiting, um, our town now, we are getting a lot of big tour buses on this section of road. Those tour buses do cross the centre lane in two sections. Um, now we, uh, and yeah, so that's, that's a big deal. Um, in today's society, we are all about trying to please everyone. We know that is not possible, but if fair solution would be to stick to the current plan that everyone, and then everyone has a little bit of ultimately what we all want is the whole road widened. Which I think reflects quite well the, the story in the paper today, that there is no clear winner and there's no clear loser, but then that's a compromise. And the health benefits for all of us would be there because we can all do a little bit of that thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline. Questions, councillor Lord.
Um, are you aware, yesterday we were told by Christine Gary that when this first came, this proposal was first put together, the proposal was to start in town and move out to the other peninsula. Um, she said that at that time, people at the Portobello end of the peninsula submitted through the annual process for it to be changed, and it was. Uh, I believe that the reason why it's been brought up this year is because people submitted at last year's annual plan for the change. So it's not really a question, but it is a, a statement, that's why this has happened. Uh, it, it's not, it's not a process that's been governed.
What's the question that has to be answered?
Were you aware of that? That, that's also, that's also not a very nice question, that this has been governed by council staff that live on the peninsula or councillors.
I understand that it's not a good, but there is an opinion of what a lot of people are saying, and I think very few are willing to say it, because it isn't politically correct, but it is up to you to convince us.
It's just not to do with rudeness.
Okay, rudeness then. Well, you convince us that that's not the case.
Councillor Wilson.
Um, I've asked everyone's questions, if there's come along who lives on the peninsula. If, um, there, there are competing interests here, um, competing communities, and, um, everyone is paying for this at, at the moment. And I'm just wondering if the real win in this is spinning it up from being a four, a ten year project to being a five year project or a seven year project. On that basis, in order to do that, would you consider, in your own personal position, um, a targeted rate or a increase in rates to cover part of, um, part of that increased cost?
I believe, um, it should, no, I don't support that, but, um, when I visited N A P R, I enjoyed their walkway, and I believe the whole community will eventually have a fantastic asset.
Thank you.
Third question, councillor Tom.
This is a question which I intend to put to a couple of people today. But it's been repeatedly suggested over the last couple of days that, um, this is, it's imperative that we maintain the existing order for the safety of children walking to school, particularly, um, the submissions have largely been with regard to Broad Bay School. There are no homes by definition, um, on the seaward side of where this is predicted to be. They're all clearly on the other side of the road. I don't know whether you have young children. Um, do you see any issues around the choice between young children walking to school along the current, uh, inadequate, but at least quiet roads, as opposed to sending them down to cross over the road, Portobello Road, to then walk along the shared pathway, to then cross back again over the road, Portobello Road, to go to the school? Which do you see as being the most dangerous for those children?
The chi-, the, the children would be still walked with their parents, or at least they, because you do the whole walking bus thing, which we would really like to have established. So I think there's definitely no safe way for a lot of children, especially in Broad Bay, to walk to their school, um, from further, yeah, from a wee bit further out. And, oh yeah, I'm a wee bit, I'm not, no, I, I, I believe that crossing the road, the parents always make sure they cross the road, and then if they, then because they walk along, it would be safer.
Well, my follow up question is, if the parents are going to go with them to assist them across the road, are the parents likely to take the longer route, backtracking, go down to Portobello Road, cross the road, go along, cross the road, come back? Or are they likely to walk with them the shorter and more direct route across the, along the roads that they are currently using?
I guess it's up to each individual how much health, health and benefits they need for themselves. Um, whether the, I mean, as a parent myself, I know it's very difficult to get out there and do your exercise if you're having to walk your kids to school. I would probably take the longer route so that I can get fit in my exercise at the same time.
So my final question is, do you accept that it might be possible that councillors sitting around this table might be asking themselves those kinds of questions, rather than whether they can advantage the mayor by putting a path closer to where he lives?
That's up to you guys to talk about.
Further questions? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate your submission. Paul Pope, the Immunity Society. The next ten minutes to yours to read out.
Thanks, I'm glad you didn't ask me that question about Portobello.
Oh, really?
Um, well, pleased to present the submission to the Immunity Society for two thousand and fourteen. As we have done for the last hundred and twenty five years, uh, we've been making submissions to the city council. Uh, I must admit, it's not the same people, it's always different.
For a while, it looked like.
Probably the first thing we really wanted to talk about was actually the Town Built Birthday, which was last year's hundred and twenty fifth anniversary event that the society ran within the city last year. Uh, obviously for us, that was extremely successful. We had nearly five hundred and fifty people take part in that event, uh, in a walk, basically from the Southern Cemetery through to Woodmore Gardens, about eight point two K. I think we actually lined it, said it was eight, just to encourage people to do the last four two Ks. Um, the thing about that, uh, event, uh, first of all, was that, um, the large number of people that actually said to us, uh, we didn't know this was here. Uh, and it was a little bit disconcerting, actually, to have people who lived and learned for a very long time know very little, almost nothing about the town built, or the fact that that route was actually readily available to actually do. Um, and I guess, um, that led us now to looking at whether or not this is something that actually could be a permanent part of the landscape and of the recreational landscape of the city. And it clearly shows to us that the existing route is already there, it exists, uh, but that it does need some, uh, work to actually make that happen. Um, and in fact, there is actually already, uh, existing policy within the Town Built Management Plan, uh, to actually see that this actually could happen as well. Um, and I think the thing that came out of the traverse also was the number and the great number of mixed people. We had people who were quite elderly, we had people with wheelchairs, we had people pushing prams, uh, we had young children. Uh, we even had poets, uh, at, uh, at the Clear at CrossFit Park reading selections from Charles Brash's work as well. So it was quite an interesting group, uh, of people who did that. And I suppose at this stage, what we're actually, actually saying to this, uh, two councillors is that this is actually looking at the town built now not just as a landscape and as ecological area, but the town built now actually really should actually be considered actually a heritage precinct up in the city. When you look at the history of the town built, it was drawn up on lines in Edinburgh before first survey here in eighteen forty eight. Um, it was actually the, uh, physical separation between rural land and the urban. So it gives you an idea just how big the Scottish settlers thought that Dunedin was actually going to become. Um, but from that perspective, as I say, the town built is also unique. And in fact, there are only three nineteenth century town belts in the world, Adelaide, Wellington and Dunedin. And incidentally, they are actually tied up with whittliff settlements, um, across the globe. There were later town belts developed in Britain after World War Two. Um, but this, these, that, that's what makes the Dunedin one unique. So at this stage, as I say, we actually see a great opportunity for the city to develop this as a permanent and full time trail running basically from the Southern Cemetery through that. Um, there are great advantages, obviously, in terms of commuter traffic, uh, for walkers and for cyclists from, from suburbs. Um, and at this stage, actually, we're, we're actually, you'll be glad to know, we're not actually asking you for money. Uh, what we're actually asking you to do at this stage is actually form with the staff, a working party between this, uh, the Immunity Society and the city council, uh, so that we actually bring in the key members of staff from roading, from parks, uh, from your promotional people as well, to work with the society to develop this concept. It may be that, um, you know, there are issues with maintenance of footpaths, there are issues with development of that. Some of that may come from your existing footpath and roading budgets. Uh, some of that may actually, actually need to be added to your capital works. Uh, it may be that also, um, the Immunity Society seek for certain parts of this to be funded to do those things, uh, not necessarily the physical works of that. We actually see this as a really great opportunity for the city. Uh, it's also an opportunity to breathe some new life into the town belt. Uh, it's an opportunity to link also the heritage areas, places like McLagan Street, uh, Queen's Gardens up through into the town belt as well. You've already done work, good work on the cycle aspects of that, which the society, uh, submitted about a couple of years ago. And as I say, we're not actually at this stage asking you for money, but we are actually asking you for some time and some opportunity to look at developing this with a view to, as I say, developing something fantastic for the community, but also perhaps in the future for tourism. Um, the next part of our submission, obviously, we say this every year, that we do become, we do become increasingly concerned about standards in relation to pests and plant animal control within, uh, reserve sites throughout the city. Obviously, that is important to the, uh, ecological conservation significance of those sites. Um, I guess there's also a slight perception perhaps that we are seeing some shoshodi sites, uh, relishments, seats, grass cutting, planting, those sort of things, as we see the economic squeeze come through. And I suppose that, I suppose the society is seeking reassurance from the council that the existing levels of funding that we see this year will continue, although of course, we'd always like to see more. Uh, but that is an important part to our city, both for our visitors, but also for our community, uh, and for our, uh, environment. And finally, the third part of our submission is, uh, I see from the annual plan that fifty thousand dollars, I believe, has been set aside to look at, uh, parking for Moana Pool. I understand some time ago through the media, there was suggestion that, uh, aspects or parts of Roberts Park may be used for this. But I have to say, it's always a little bit nerve wracking for the society when you see parts of the town belt or parts of, uh, city reserves possibly being used in this way. And I suppose, I guess, what we're just simply saying is that we hope that, um, that is not the case. Uh, but clearly that, um, with appropriate levels of design, uh, that can be innovative and maximise space more appropriately would be the way to go. Um, I guess what we'll do is we'll watch this, watch this space and, and hope that, uh, we might get a letter from you guys asking us for a comment on that one at some stage. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Great, just got the answer.
There was, uh, in the past, uh, the ability for, uh, special peak parking requirements around Moana Pool to park, uh, all the way down the side of the road that goes through the town belt, uh, and, um, in to park the town belt as it goes up Littlebourn Drive. All that parking has been, um, basically shut off by roads with big rocks being put in the way so that people can't use that side of the road. And also, uh, down through the green belt, uh, area of Queen's Drive, no parking signs, all line up, where there used to be, uh, a very helpful amount of, um, extra peak parking available. What is your view on the, uh, use of the edges of some bits of the town belt as what used to be allowed, um, for this, uh, peak parking requirement around the pool? Um, do you consider that, uh, it should never be allowed, or do you think it should be allowed in some cases?
What we're suggesting, what we're suggesting is that, um, with innovative and clever design, that perhaps, um, that would deliver the impact on the town belt. After remembering, the town belt is not a car park, it's actually a public reserve. Um, and the roads that actually run through the, uh, through the town belt are not public roads, they're actually part of the reserve. Um, and the issue that you alluded to in relation to Littlebourne Road is an issue that, um, the society took a great deal of exception to the council in the way that they managed that without the public consultation over the use of that road, and to create that into a car park as it was. And it took us nearly five years of lobbying, um, two mayors and two chief executives to actually see that actually change and to remind the council that, as I say, the town belt is a public reserve and is used here for open space. Um, there is a separate piece of legislation that deals with the road management and the road network within the town belt. Like I say, I, I'm, we take an open mind with the issue over Roberts Park and the parking issues. We understand that there are pressures on the pool. I suppose you might also say, if there are pressures on the pool, is that also saying that the site has reached its limits as far as actually being a recreational, um, area? And does that then lead us to the direction to say, well, does the city need a completely new pool? Why don't you put a new site? Pools are obviously hot topics, obviously, in Moskew and around the city at the moment. Like I say, we have an open mind on that, but we will be taking an interest in that. Um, the, the issue of parking in the town belt was, is, is, has come up with the society before. One of the issues that we've seen in relation to that is issues around the parking, city's parking strategy and the enforcement of that strategy. We have seen some parking being pushed through that out of the city, particularly commuter parking. And obviously, within the town belt and for residents around the town belt, that reduces the immunity value and the aesthetic value of that. We'd like to certainly see that dissolved. Um, like I say, at the moment, we have an open mind in relation to the Roberts Park thing and the pool thing. But again, in a, in a, in a strategic point of view, you have to ask yourself, has that site locked, lit, finished, as it reached its capacity, as far as that's concerned?
Right, you said you've got an open mind regarding Roberts Park. Uh, my question was more around, uh, the reserve status of the roads that run through, um, the green belt under the, the road that goes down to Alderston from Moana Pool, uh, and also where we used to have parking. Uh, my understanding is that on the one hand, you say you've got an open mind, and on the other hand, you're saying that in fact, all reserve area is absolutely sacred. You will not park in it, even if it is to lay a severely, uh, constrained peak requirement, say at Moana Pool.
It didn't say that, what I said was we had an open mind in relation to, uh, some of the, some of the, the use of the site, obviously, for parking, and in terms of Roberts Park and what, what that may involve around design. The issue around Littlebourne was exacerbated by council's decision to change the lights and the direction of the road there. That was a decision. That was a decision that was made by your staff without consultation with the community. So my suggestion would be that you go back to that decision that was made. As I say, it took the society, we argued with both mayors, the previous mayor and the previous chief executive, that that was a wrong decision made by your staff that should be repaired. And it took them some time, five years to repair that.
And you think all such decisions in relation to any parking in the Green Belt anywhere should be recognising the reserve status?
Of course it should.
Look, this has been a precious game of and humour. Certainly, Paul's made a position very clear.
I would, excuse me, I would just make the point that had consultation being exercised at Littlebourn, it would never have been made one way. They didn't have the consultation, if the case was made, it would never have been made one way.
Councilor Paul.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. A shame that those who came before us didn't have the vision to put our city's swing ball in a place with more room to expand perhaps. You said that you're not asking for money, for extra money, just a reallocation of current council budgets through this work?
What we would like to do first of all is actually create a working team, a team of people within the councils, from council staff, to actually explore the issues around the town belt traverse. So that we could both, because that's information in relation to current operational budgets. Because we don't as a society have that knowledge. We have a knowledge over the whole overview of the project. So what we'd like to do is actually create a working party, as I say, multi-disciplinary group, work through those issues, see what can be done within the existing budgets, what can't be, what needs to go into capital, what the society might be able to do as a public steering plan, and basically see where we can go with this and see how we can take this on there.
Because you're not the only people to come to us with concerns around the current level of council maintenance in the parks realm.
I cut and paste the same discussion about council funding over parks and reserves year after year after year. If you look back over the last three or four years, you will see that exactly the same wording, the same submission. And in fact, it's probably been something that's been done by the society in exactly the same way. Yeah, look, it is a concern, and obviously we want to have a vibrant city, we want a vibrant recreational community, we want a good environment and a good landscape. And we realise that of course there are always limited funds. But it's always a question of hoping that the beautiful things, the important things, I suppose, what we see as important things don't get cut off the list.
If we had to prioritise though, you'd want to see the town belt spending prioritised over other city parks and reserves?
There is already, I believe, a budget for the town belt within the current parks' operational spend. So I would not like to see that reduced any further. But what I'm saying is that there are issues in relation to the town belt traverse. If you look at that, some of those issues may be dealt with within the roding budget.
Yeah, I mean, you've obviously done a bunch of thinking about this and I'd like to congratulate the society for the town belt traverse as an event and long may it continue. Many of these issues are relatively small and could be undertaken simply and inexpensively. What kinds of things?
Well, for example, there are some areas, for example, that where basic footpathing is required to keep people separate off from the road. If you walk on paths of Queen's Drive, there's no footpathing. And there was a plan put together, I think, two or three years ago by council, it was done as a consultant report for cycling and for pedestrian access. And it seems time perhaps to revisit that from that perspective. I'm not sure whether that puts in the, in the council's priorities for the network at this stage.
You list a fine catalogue of native birdlife that exists in the town belt. We've had a number of submissions, mainly from the minister actually, talk about the concerns they have for their native birdlife with regards to wild cats and the like. Is that an issue for the Immunity Society particularly in the town belt?
Cats are an issue in the town belt, solo rats. And I have a PhD student who has been asking me for some time about whether or not a study in rats should actually, should be done. Their interest has, they've been doing some informal tunnel tracking and rats are definitely an issue in the town belt. The council did good work a few years ago on opossums. Again, that's work that needs to be continued in the current budget. Cats, feral cats are an issue right across the whole country. And, you know, we've had Mr Gareth Morgan's made a big figure of that and anyone else like that. And people come up and said, save the cats, and other people saying they've killed the cats. There is an issue, especially in places like Dunedin where we are a wildlife, that is the basis of our tourism industry. And we do need to look at those issues and we do need to work out how we deal with that. And we do need to also work with groups like the RSPCA and animal welfare organisations as well at the same time to do that. And that's not an easy thing, but it's something, I think, ongoing dialogue has to go on there and that's something that needs to be done.
Which of those two, if we were to prioritise, and opossums obviously were first on the list, are cats or rats the biggest issue?
I couldn't, I couldn't say without doing some fieldwork and giving you the benefit of some fieldwork and some study, probably of poos to be honest, and the dialogue, that's difficult to say. But it is an issue, there are things like that out there.
Thanks, Paul. Councilor McTavish.
Bye, thank you.
Your right, Councilor Capp.
Just thought to give us a sense of what the parking problem is at Moana, or I happen to have an available toddler who can be scratched here on a Saturday morning. Would some of you like to come along and out my car with said toddler and see what it's like to try and get her parked near Moana Pool?
I have a 13-year-old.
At the moment?
I have a 13 and a 10-year-old who's in a swimming sports, we go every Thursday, every Thursday. And yeah, but I appreciate there are issues with parking. But what I'm saying to you is that from my perspective, from the Immunity Society's perspective, what we're looking for is innovative design, so that, as I say, we're not losing recreational space and forest space. Appreciate what you're saying, but as I say, I have children too, I take them to the pool every week. A lot of parents do from where I live, and I understand it's difficult. And as I say, it's about innovative design.
But you haven't got any thoughts about what that might look like? I'm saying you just need to drive around and around there a few times to get a feeling for, can we be made for it?
I'll go back to, I'll go back to that. If parking, if parking is such an issue, is that issue then not whether or not Moana Pool has actually reached the end of its lifespan in terms of space, if you can't develop, if you have to take more parts of the town belt to do that?
We're a reasonable society and the town belt's a very, very important part to it. We also understand other things happen in the city as well that might have impacts into the town belt. What we say is that anything that has to happen, the town belt has to be considered and somebody has to talk on behalf of the town belt. And we're prepared to put up our hands and just say, well, let's have a look at the other side. We're not dyed in the ditch that everything has to be in such line, but we just don't accept that other departments of the DCC can just unilaterally go walk around the rights of the town belt because the town belt can't talk for itself, somebody has to do it, and that's what we stand for.
And that's what our role's been for the last 125 years.
Understood. No more questions? Thank you very much for your submission.
Oh, excellent.
Your place? Thank you. Graham Anderson. Page 84 in the first topic.
Mr Anderson, welcome. Thank you very much for seeing me at such short notice. I'll be very brief. First of all, I'd like to say a huge thank you to the council for the work that it has done on improving the facilities for cyclists to make their life a little bit safer for them. And I encourage the council to continue its good work in that respect. For the Portobello Road and Carrington Port Road, I'll say that I'm in full support of the submission of spokes, so I won't go into a great deal of detail because they've covered it far more relatively than I possibly could. Here, I'll give you an illustration of some of the difficulties we have at the moment. I have a, I go with a recreational cycling group most Sunday mornings and occasionally, we go various parts of the city, but occasionally we need to go around the pub, pub at Harbour anyway, because it's one of the jewels in the crown of the city. And very much appreciated. A number of our group will simply not go past the end of the cycleway, past the Vauxhall Yacht Club, simply because they don't feel safe. And I think that's a bit rare to see. So I would encourage the council to do whatever it can to advance progress on that, on that piece there to at least give us a nice continuous, safe, what we, what we call a safer cycling route. On the other side of the harbour, I know, I don't think the council has any direct financial input into that, but I'd be grateful if the council could use its influence to progress the continuation of the cycleway in that direction out to Port Chalmers. The other thing I'd say is that I know it's very difficult for the council because everybody tells you how to spend more money, very few people tell you how you can save it. But I'm going to give you a suggestion and I would propose that you can the proposal to, for these library in south Dunedin, because to me it just seems to be an extravagance. You've got a wonderful facility right in the heart of the city, which is about two to three kilometres away from south Dunedin, five minutes in a bus. Libraries at Port Chalmers, Moazkill, Waikwadi, Waitehdi. Yep, that's fine, I'd have no difficulty with that. But yeah, to me, like I say, things are extravagant. Is that really all I want to say?
Thank you. Councilor Lewis.
Thanks Graham for your submission. We've heard from a lot of people who live around Bore Bay and Portobello who say that they just can't walk between places because of the safety and so it's, it's got to, we have to consider those as well. It appears to me that frustration with everyone with this project, as it's only, it's a 10-year project. As a rate plan, would you be happy to see an increase in rates in order to get this project set up if that was an option?
Yes, absolutely. No question.
Any further questions? Thank you very much for your submission, Graham. We're going to take a break now and we'll come back just after quarter past.
Thank you for having us here. We do appreciate the opportunity for our submission to be heard today. Our submission relates to the City Planning section of the draft annual plan on page 72, where there is a valued and protected natural environment. As you've already said, my name's Cathy Roofhout and this is Brendan Cross. We represent the Otago Peninsula Biodiversity Group as a project coordinator and Brendan's the chair of the group. We're part of a bigger crowd of landowners and residents who are working to better protect the indigenous wildlife and the habitats out on the Otago Peninsula, as well as maintaining TB free spaces. Our trademark today has been the possum removal project, that's progressing well. Since the middle of 2011, over 6,000 opossums have been taken off the peninsula. We're gearing up for a final mopper operation on the lands from Portobello through to Taora Head this winter. And we're hoping that will really take care of the few remaining opossums over there. We'd like to acknowledge here a contribution of $10,000 from the DCC that is going towards that mopper operation. Once that's completed, we're going to turn our attention back to the land from Portobello through to the city and start reworking those areas. An important component of that work will be a wide community consultation with residents in the suburbs adjoining the peninsula, Waverley, Andy Bay, Vauxhall. This zone will become an important buffer zone preventing possum movement back onto declared landings in the peninsula. So we really like to get in touch with all householders. We'd like to let, give all residents an opportunity to come along to public meetings, hear more about the control proposal. And we think the best way of doing that is to do a mailbox drop. Just a leaflet we make up, just very briefly identifying our goals, our aims and the invitation to come and hear more. And we have asked from our submission this year to council for some logistical assistance with that mailbox drop. And the final and second point that we'd just like to make this morning relates to a decision from last year's draft annual plan, where the council requested that staff establish a most appropriate mechanism to support and provide ongoing liaison with the Otago Peninsula Biodiversity Group. Well, we're really pleased with this decision, but it has yet to be implemented. So we ask in this submission, could we have some implementation of that this year? We look forward to establishing a good working relationship with the council and it's obviously of benefit to coordinate and collaborate on pest control efforts on the peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Councilor Starks?
Firstly, thank you for your great work. It's a reminder to see that the possum numbers are coming down on the peninsula. In terms of the buffer zone, the Digital Office organised a created event where local software companies put forward proposals for apps that would help the community. And one of those was for possum control. And it was done specifically for the operation that was going on on the peninsula. Did that ever get used? I know it's been written, what it enables people to do is anybody who's got a possum trap as part of that buffer zone could just, could with the app, let the person who was controlling those traps know that there was a possum in it to be removed and reset, as opposed to having to go and check all the traps?
That was set up to a certain level. That hasn't been implemented into the project work as yet. There needs to be some more work done on that to make it operational. So, and that's going to take funding. And so in terms of our position as a trust, we don't, we haven't prioritised that funding in terms of developing software as opposed to, has that been passed back to the Digital Office? Because I don't think we're expecting you to fund it. If there are issues with that app, then it would be nice to know so that we could action it. Yeah, the issue that we've had over the last 12 months, that we had our project manager that we've had over the last three, three and a half years, we had a break in funding from, for our project manager. And unfortunately, we had to, we were funding that position ourselves for a period of time, but that was unsustainable. So therefore, our talks with Doc, who are funding the project manager role, were ongoing. And so that funding has only just recently come through. So unfortunately, we had to break ties with our original project manager, who was in talks with Digital Office with that project. And then now, it's only just recently, in the last month, that we've been able to take on a new project manager. So there's been a lot of work done by the trustees over this period. But in terms of following up on that, I have had discussions with the Digital Office. And it is at a level that it's, it's working at this stage. But the value to us at this stage is, it probably needs some work to get it more operational. So we've been under, in the project so far, we've been using contractors to do all of our work. So that whenever a possum is caught, it is recorded, things are done in a systematic fashion. If we, if we go to, if we're relying on to, in the initial stages, relying on the community to do the work, then we run the risk that we miss opportunities.
I think the aim of the software was to enable community members who were part of the scheme wishing to be to flag to the contractor that a possum had been caught. So the contractor, rather than the contractor having to check every trap and use a lot more time and effort for doing that, there were people who were willing to monitor the trap, but they didn't have to deal with the possum, they could just let the, by responding on the app, they told the contractor where, which trap was, had activated and had a possum. trap was, had activated and had a possum, so that they could go directly there, tidy that up, reset it. So that was the aim of it. Is there someone that the Digital Office can contact to further that, if it needs some enhancement?
Yeah, that would be Cathy.
It sounds like it's a timing thing too. It's a big timing thing. The residents in the suburbs on the peninsula are quite well versed to emailing us, emailing us, chatting to relevant people to say about possum sightings. Not so much work has been done in those town suburbs, city suburbs yet. So I'm wondering if there's, if we're testing the apps down in the peninsula suburbs, because people are simply a lot more aware of the possum communication. I'd be the one to chat that.
Counselor Hawkins?
Just quickly, thanks for your submission. The strategies that you had in place to deal with the possum problem, how translatable are they to deal with other invasive pest species, hypothetically speaking cats on the peninsula?
That's, that's something that I couldn't answer, to be honest. We've never, we've never gone down the path of looking at controlling cats.
I guess my question is, what is it that you're, what are you doing that's specific to the possum species that would make it?
Everything.
Okay.
I mean, each pest species needs its own sort of specific eradication plan developed. It's the sort of the lines you go for it. So, you know, we've, we're working like Brendan said, a very systematic possum eradication plan at the moment. But already, because that is progressing so well, the OPBG is starting talks about the next level of pest species. And at the moment, that would be rats and stoats. We're already seeing more sign of them recently. Whether that's linked or not to the possum project, nobody can tell. But it's certainly two species that the residents and the wider community are very interested in supporting further control of.
Counselor McTague?
Thank you, and welcome Cathy to your new role. My question is in relation to some other submissions that we've had around a desire among some parts of the community for the DCC to have traps which members could basically borrow or use at low cost for use in their own properties. I know that you guys have got a large number of people out on the peninsula who are trapping. What is the arrangement there? Are they cell-owned traps or are they owned by you guys or are they owned by Doc or?
Mostly, we own 350 of the Tims' traps. And so they're available to community members at no charge. We've currently got, I think there's 150 traps out in the community at the moment. So they are used, they are at no charge and they're showing how to set them and work those traps.
And in terms of safety issues and things around there, you guys haven't had any problems?
No, no. These tracks, the ones we're talking about called the killtraps, they really are.
Good for you.
Absolutely developed to avoid possums. Yeah, some live capture traps available too for people who are uncomfortable with killtraps. And they're, it's sort of like a library loan system, you can keep a record, let it go out. But it's actually amazing and we've all been heartened by the number of people who are controlling possums just off their own bat, going into CRT, you know, and getting their own traps as well. So there's, it's a real group at the moment.
Thank you.
Counselor Watty?
Thank you. Are there any issues with rabbits?
On the peninsula? Yes.
Anything being done or looking to be done?
That would be a regional council issue, I think. So yeah, I know that from a personal perspective on our properties, that regional council has been out doing monitoring and looking at rabbit levels. So the timeframe of that, I'm not sure if you're aware, but once monitoring is in place, you then have to, if you're above a certain level on the rabbit scale, you have to undertake a management plan and then you're given 12 months to implement that plan. So in terms of a rabbit problem, in my farming career or my lifetime, there's more rabbits on the peninsula than there's ever been.
Counselor Lewis?
You've talked about stoats and ferrets included as somebody, pests, so much harder to source traps for them. And I know the Sinclair Wetlands has got some traps that are working really well. And for me, the opportunity of buying bulk is something, and you talk about CRT, which is absolutely fabulous to get the Tims' traps. But would you consider a way of getting a bulk buy that others' communities can share in to get things like the stoat and ferret traps that are so successful? And the other one is consideration for collaboration with your story, which I think is a brilliant story with the Otago Museum or someone other. I think your story is worth telling and it's not been told well and it's a really good story that should be told about the difference you are making out there. So I think promotion wise, you need to possibly think about something like that. The museum's got some wonderful examples of those pest, that's all.
Any questions?
It is, I'm asking if they're ready to collaborate. We've heard from the museum that they're doing outreach and they want to do that stuff and we are just giving an opportunity and putting two submissions together, you wish it.
In terms of looking at bulk buying and things like that, absolutely. In terms of our strategy to go for stoats and things, the beauty that the project has had so far in terms of possum is that we're talking about a single species project and we can do that quite easily in terms of knock-on effects. Our next stage is the difficult one in terms of it'll be a multi-species approach. So if we take out rabbits or if we take out stoats and ferrets, we have an issue. So we need to balance that. So in terms of how we go about that, that's what we're looking at in the very near future. But in terms of collaboration with other groups, absolutely. And in terms of telling our story, absolutely.
Any further questions? Brendan? Thank you.
Thank you.
Simon Noble?
Okay, thank you very much for hearing me, saying good morning, everyone. Just a couple of things I want to say before I get started. Partly thank you for the opportunity to make a submission. I also want to acknowledge, as I submitted before the break, that the work that council and NZTA has done in the last year or so acknowledging cycling and the more cycling infrastructure within the city, following some of the traffic incidents that they've had. I think both organisations have done a really good job of responding to those. And it's really good to see the government finally convening the New Zealand Cycling Safety Summit a couple of weeks ago. So thanks for that. Also just want to say, I'm really quite impressed with the submission process that I made online and all coming here today, it's actually the first time I've done it. So it's good, it's been quite a good process. Good to hear you've got lots of submissions. I just wanted to clear a little conflict of interest. I'm a parks and recreation consultant by, as that's my business. And so I've got some interest in cycling as a recreational pursuit, as well as a sporting pursuit or as a health pursuit. And some interest in perhaps working with council in that sort of area. So I probably will avoid commenting on parks and recreation, it's good nature as such. I mainly want to focus on the order of works on the city to Port Bello cycleway construction. So yesterday, I read the story in the paper about that and read it as well. When I read this story, I was quite alarmed about, about that, that maybe my submission was wrong, maybe doing the Vauxhall to Biffellet section first was not a good idea. So I got in the car and went out to Port Bello and Bourne Bay schools at three o'clock to, which felt pretty creepy. I had to say, yeah. And I've taken a car out there with all these kids at that time with a camera, it would have been, felt like the safest thing to do. But I was that concerned by what I saw in the paper and wanted to get a sense of whether, whether I sort of got that right in for myself. And I was quite prepared to come here and judge what I suggested in my submission. But when I got there, while I would say that the walking infrastructure isn't exactly perfect in those two places and around those two schools, there isn't a complete connectedness from one end of those two villages through to the other that includes the schools, there's a bit of crossing roads and crossing sidewalks. Generally, and at least to a reasonable extent, you can make your way along the inner side of the road there on foot, on a spot path with reasonable amount of separation from cars. However, on a bike between Vauxhall, where the cycleway comes on the ends, and Biffellet, there's essentially no infrastructure to ride on at. You're in the air of lane, in many places it's over 100 flax flowers and after any kind of storms, calving gravel. And it's very, very difficult riding. And I, I am a really experienced rider, but I find it very intimidating riding along there. My wife basically won't. And she goes, she certainly can't ride over the hill with me, so to get to McKendrie Bay to have that coffee is, you know, it's a rare event for us. And while we emphasise that I don't think the infrastructure's fantastic out at Bourne Bay and Port Bello either, but at least it's partially there. The problem seems to me to be that there's basically nothing in that first section. So I would submit that that area seems to me to be a higher priority. Of course, there's less traffic further out to and in those two villages, it's theoretically going slower. Although the bus that went to us, Port Bello School yesterday was, I think probably doing 60 kilometres an hour. This is at three o'clock, so it wasn't very pretty. And I suggest whichever option council chooses, I think there are some things you could do on the option you don't choose, the place you don't choose to make either the cycling or the walking safer. And those might be more signs, more of those, I know Dunedin's piloting something with NZTA, it's a mark that goes on the road, it's a bike with an arrow. So more of those, or it could be some bollards or some guardrails, or even a bit of cuppering here and there. Maybe there's, at Bacon Street, I think it is, Bourne Bay, a bridge across the creek. Now, that's not a small item. But I do think whichever option you choose, I would look at some small cheap renovations to make to the option you don't choose for the short term.
Thank you. Counselor McTague?
Sorry, where does that bridge, Simon?
Bacon Street, at the far side of.
On the far end.
Just where the, those temporary traffic lights are at the moment.
Yeah.
The footpath kind of goes along the area and then it, that's one place where it does in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Oh, go to the author.
Consistent, so I suppose I should ask this question. Sorry, I wish I did. As someone who can understand the benefits and the dilemma that the community's in, the frustration, I think, for most people is it's a 10-year project. Would you as a rate payer be prepared to consider a increase in rates to get this project through, fast if that was an option?
This is why I say I'm not a rate payer. But we're, but.
You're in high three rates.
Yes. I mean, as a, as a general principle, I think we're New Zealand-wide, I know rates are high, people think rates are an issue, rate increases are an issue, but I don't think we're paying enough rates to sustain the infrastructure we've got or adapt it to new world, new trends. So yes.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Simon. Conrad Stig? Welcome, Conrad. Next one, Billings is yours.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come along and present my submission. I've actually got some handouts here. Twenty there. My submission is to do with the Sinclair Espinade, blocking off the main parking, main access to the Espinade, the intersection there of Forbury, Bedford and Victoria Road. I understand it's possibly been thought in the past when that was all regenerated years ago. The submission is, due to safety, I'm a local resident there and it's gotten a lot busier, obviously with traffic, foot traffic and children in the playground, that sort of thing. I've got a plan on there, obviously take away car parking, but there's a plan, there's a disused ground at the south side of the Majestic Mansions. Having been a local resident there all my life really, that area doesn't get used. It's not functional. Kids, if they do go up there with their family and have a picnic, they kick a ball that goes, rolls down onto Bedford Street and just rolls away. The other area closer to Pier 24 is used more frequently. I envisage blocking off the street at that intersection, as I said. And there is actually a access up there, walkway access, we could widen that and make a flow through there one way, create some car parking. If there's no car parking available there, then people could flow through to the existing car park and then out the other side. And there's car parking obviously on the actual beach front. Making it two-way from Beach Street because we obviously do need shared access for emergency vehicles, service vehicles for the restaurants, residents, car parks and also visitors to the accommodation along there. There's a picture of a bollard that's in existence in Wellington, I understand. These ones actually are on a swipe card and they go into the ground, but obviously it's a cost. This proposal could be done in stages because it is obviously, will cost some money, but it could be done in stages, so that's not a great lump out of the start. So blocking off the street, obviously protect the pedestrians and then do the car parking and then cobblestone after that and maybe some bollards, that sort of thing. I think it'll enhance, obviously it goes back to the safety thing, our residents walking around or our tourists walking around, our children. Next thing is community enhancement, freedom for the locals and tourists to engage in a safe environment. And also possibly the ability in the future to run some markets there, just prompt you just to have a nice feel down there. Some people come along temporarily and just have a market running there. I've blocked off that street once before and a couple of years ago, we ran a fundraiser for families at Christmas time, we had a ban down there, blocked off the street, we raised money for the Salvation Army and a bouncy castle. And everyone was just walking around, it was actually really great. Everyone talked about how this would be great for the future if we could do that more permanently. Obviously, there's a shared space with obviously all the vehicles that need to go down through there. So there'd need to be some little relief bays for cars or trucks to go into, turning circles that need to be created. As I said, it can be staged, it doesn't have to happen all at once. So that's basically my submission, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McTague?
Thanks, Conrad. Question, have you engaged with the businesses in that area?
Not, I frequent them regularly, one in particular, I've got my Sinclair Men's Book Club there. But I, I have, I've spoken to them and that, yeah, they're okay with it. I haven't spoken to the florist and I envisage that would probably be the only bug there because she would be wanting people to drive past and possibly catch you out of the forest. The restaurants and the cafes, I would say, well, we're bringing more people, there's more parking there than has been taken away, so therefore we can get more people in there to, and they're walking around anyway, going from, if they can't get a seat here, they can go here. So I would envisage it would be the florist that would be affected more.
And you, just looking at the, I mean, you wouldn't lose that many car parks, it's really just the ones, I don't know what the name of the street is, but.
There's about 14 or 16 car parks along that stretch there. The ones that are on an angle and then you've got about four or five actually that run flat, but you gain an extra four if we go to that flat, but the 20 car parks possibly in there. And I would like to actually on that as well, that car park, you see a bit of green there? I don't want to see, I would hate to see just concrete car park, I'd like to see some greenery to break it up. Yeah.
I imagine that you could probably also fit a few more on Beach Street, but it's.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
So there would be other alternatives, probably.
Exactly. Parking is a premium out there, but yeah, but we gained some of it there, so.
Thank you.
Councilor Wilson? Thank you.
All right.
This is quite an exciting looking proposal.
Well, the court's gone on to it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Do you need to bring out trucks? Now, welcome, and before we start, and because I might forget to be in, I'd like to thank you, to, I understand both of you are shortly stepping down from your roles, and I'd like to thank you for all the effort and all the contribution that both of you have made over the last few years to the Fringe Festival and to a number of other things. And I'm sure you'll be involved in some of those other things in the future, but you've made an enormous contribution to the Fringe, and that has enlivened our setting immensely under your guidance. Thank you. Now, the floor is yours.
Mr. Mayor, councillors, thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. We'd like to divide, as we usually do, a brief presentation into two bits. I'm speaking on behalf of the trust and fellow trustees, and I'm here to thank council so much for the support that we continue to get. It's not just support in terms of funding, it's support in terms of advice, and a good deal of support in other ways. It shows that council is really engaged with what the Fringe is about, and that is important. Councillors, some around the table we've spoken to very recently have participated in the last Fringe, not that far back, and report having had wonderful times. I think the audience survey results show that we're certainly heading in the right direction in terms of really establishing brand festival, if you like, in Dunedin. We have that acknowledgement coming locally, nationally, and now increasingly internationally. So really, that's all I'm here to say, is thank you very much, and I've thoroughly enjoyed my time in this role. We do have a succession plan we've been working on for some time, and I'm sure you'll see stability and continuance in the future, so thank you.
Thank you, David, for your comments, and it's been, the Fringe Festival's been a big part of my life, so it is quite hard to move on from that, but it's been a fantastic journey and a great thing to have been part of over the years. And I just wanted briefly, just for those who perhaps don't know about this year's event, this year we presented 50 events in all art forms by over 200 artists from New Zealand and overseas, and about 10,000 people came to the event. And many of them are young people, so our audience survey shows that the largest audience grouping is 18 to 25, so that's 31%. So that's to be expected, we've got to focus on emerging artists, it's a strong student population, and also many of the people are new each year, so 47% of our audience were new. And I mean, there is a large turnover of young people in the city, but I think the point I'm trying to make is that it's an important festival for young people, not just young people, it's quite a varied audience, but I think that is an important, you know, it plays an important role in providing a really valuable activity in Dunedin that is high profile. The media coverage generated from the festival is over $115,000. So, you know, we are certainly putting our best foot forward in terms of showcasing what Dunedin has to offer. The audience survey showed that 95% of the respondents of to our survey found the festival entertaining, not far beyond that, 90% found the event innovative, and as an overall measure, 87% were satisfied or very satisfied with the festival. So over the next few years, the board, the trust will continue to build on that and continue to build links nationally and internationally. The change of director is not going to be a huge blip for us, because we do have a lot of procedural manuals and a lot of, over the last 14 years, built up a lot of useful sort of infrastructure in terms of our event, and that experience won't be lost. So I'm quite confident that the festival will continue to grow, but in terms of our, just quickly running through the key points for our submission, the, one of the points that we do make is that we encourage the council to consider a multi-year contract for major and premier events. That was introduced a couple of years ago, it was stopped last year because of a new council coming in. It is a useful thing for major events just to have that continuity, that they know that there is some funding available, and that, you know, that can be utilised to sort of bring on other funders as well. There is some concern from the festival that the amount of funding for events overall is static. I think that just needs to be looked at, it can't stay that way forever, and I know things are pretty tight, so we're not asking for the impossible, but I think, you know, there does need to be an increase at some stage in the years to come for the total budget for events in Dunedin. Yesterday, when I was here for the mid-winter carnival, I met the community gallery, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, it's a great facility, but I think there needs to be some change around how it's utilised in terms of its application process, and that's something I will take up with, with the community development committee. I also wanted to mention that the festival is very supportive of the arts and culture strategy, and it's going to be working closely with council to try and, you know, encourage as much consultation as possible. Our only concern would be that enough funding is put into the consultation that it is done really well. It's not just for the arts and culture community, it's for the whole community, so we certainly hope that that is taken seriously and, you know, the council really gets behind that. Yes, I think that's probably about all from us, so thank you very much for your time this morning.
Questions, councillors? No questions? All the very best to both of you in your future lives.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Christopher Clifford? Flaw for Christopher. You were representing the New Zealand International Early Music Festival, so you have 10 minutes to prepare.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and councillors, I've got to put my specs on, I think. Do I have my specs on? I have three events for your consideration this morning. The New Zealand International Early Music Festival is asking the council to give financial support for these submissions. These events will further enhance the cultural life of Dunedin to the benefit of residents, students, tourists, and have additional benefits for hotels and restaurants. And the three events are, number one, the festival for 2015, from the 28th of March, 28th of February to the 8th of March, the theme next year will be the Renaissance. There will be 10 events of music, music composed before 1760. This is the second festival after the first successful festival in March this year, which was run on a shoestring. It was really a pilot event. The festival needs to gear up a notch and attract more international artists and tourists, and the sum requested is $60,000. Event two, a staged Baroque opera performance. We're suggesting Handel's Isis and Galatea, a very jolly pastoral piece from 1718. I sent you all a YouTube link on Monday, I hope you've listened to it, it should have brightened your day, it was only three and a half minutes. This would be a first for the night of Dunedin, bringing worldwide interest to our city and New Zealand. The performance would be a collaboration with the Southern Symphonia. David Virchell would be conducting. The Southern Symphonia are keen, but do not have enough money in their budget for an opera, so they've asked us to do something about it. We will also involve the university in this venture. The sum requested is $50,000. Event three, cultural exchange with our twin city, Shanghai. This is specifically for return airfares for 12 persons, taking the Tudor's programme of the rare birds and label violette from the festival of 2014 on a tour of China in August 2015. I already have a Chinese music agency interested, and we're at the negotiating stage at the moment. The sum requested is $30,000. I also want to bring to your attention Hobart Baroque, who have just had their second early music festival in April. I have circulated you all with a link to this festival, which has been an early music triumph for cultural tourism. They have had a lot of Australian government financial support. Their budget is over $1.5 million. Their population is about 220,000, and Dunedin's is around 127,000. There is no reason that our city could not host an event of such excellence, given the financial backing. We all want Dunedin to prosper. Thank you for your attention, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Questions, councillor? Councilman McTague?
Thank you. I mean, Christopher, I'm just, I'm wondering whether or not, I think we put you in touch with staff in the way to discuss events and our funding mechanisms.
Yes.
Will you be...
Which I've done, yes.
Will you be, because we don't consider events, grants, or funding through this process that's delegated to our grants committee, and so you're aware of that process and you will probably be coming back to us, and this is just a heads up at the stage, is that what you're...
Yes, I have approached the funding, but to be quite honest, the amount we can actually ask for at this present moment, since we've only just done one festival, and it's a small number of people, is peanuts. We're trying to run an international festival, and I'm sorry, but the amount we're being offered is small.
Further questions? Oh, councillor MacTague, sorry. Thank you. Christopher, thank you. The initiative, the event you ran earlier this year, I just wondered how it panned out financially for you.
Yes, I can give you that answer. We obtained $7,000 in grants and donations, $4,000 were from the Ataga Community Trust, and we had another thousand from the University of the Third Age, and 2,000 from generous donations from private people. And we managed to make $10,000 from ticket sales, so we were quite pleased. We were, the audiences were about, just, the total audience number was around 500. So it's a small start, but we've got to start somewhere. It was a pilot festival to see whether we could actually do it. We did do it, and we came up positive.
Councilor Hawke?
Thank you, thanks, Christopher. The sums requested here, $140,000 for these three projects, how is that relative to the total budget for those three projects?
For the three...
You're requesting 60, 50, and 30K?
Yeah.
How much are those, how much will these cost in total?
Well, the...
Are you, you want the council to fund the entirety of the projects?
Well, I'd like the council to consider these three projects, okay, but obviously, yes, we're hoping that the council will contribute a major part, but of course, I'm also talking to other funding bodies. Now that we've done one festival, of course, we've got a balance sheet, so they can see that we survived, and we thought we made good. So this is the overall amount I'm looking at here, but on the other hand, that's how generous you're feeling here.
It's not my money, Christopher, unfortunately.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councillors.
If I tab you at Aga, Tammy Richardson. Lindsay Smith.
Welcome, Lindsay. Thank you very much. Thank you, councillors, for a chance to speak to you. And I guess I'd like to begin by congratulating you and thanking you on behalf of the people of Dunedin for the work that you've done with the Shared Power Alliance. I can't think of another project that I've seen in another city that's made such a difference at a whole range of levels. I look at McCandrie Bay, which has turned into a beautiful little community, partly because I think of the work that was done there. You go down the cycleway, down the shared pathway, down the water side of the harbour, there are people using it from dawn till dusk, and I think it's absolutely marvelous what you've done. So part of, I guess, the reason I've come here is that the number of submissions you've got, there are so many of us who want to take benefit from this project, and we want you to bring forward what you're doing, certainly to help people like me, and I speak quite clearly, I live at Chalice, and I would benefit from option C, and that's why I speak on behalf of it. I understand that the council doesn't have limited funds and can't raise and undo all this at once, and so it is a matter of a choice. And I thank you for the opportunity to review what you set as a schedule, to look at the best way that we can get from cities money, and the best bank we can get for our buck workers. I support option C for four main reasons, and the first is, I think we need to compare apples with apples. The section from Vauxhall to Le Fellet has absolutely no pathways at all for walking, riding, or anything else. There's a tiny section at the Cove where it doesn't actually connect with anything on the wrong side of the road, but for the rest of that area, there is no walkways or pathways, so we can't access any of those facilities. As I said earlier before, I went and actually had a look at Broadbay and at Portabello, and both of those areas, despite what the photos in the paper suggest, actually have some access, the people can go to school. So what I'm saying is that by doing the Vauxhall, you're giving the basics to somebody, what would be done in the other areas is actually improving what they have there already. And I make the point that part of what the concerns, particularly in Broadbay, is children having to cross the road, will not be solved by shared power on the waterside. People living at one end of Broadbay will still have to cross to get onto that pathway, they'll walk to school and have to cross to get back across to school. So their greatest concern about having to cross Portabello Road, in fact, is not solved by the shared power. Point two, I think, I'd like to make is that when we're spending council's money, or other money, and we want the biggest bank for the buck, and I do point the council to your own figures. The section from Vauxhall to Le Fellet has the greatest traffic counts, has the greatest population, has the greatest risk, has the greatest accident rates. I know there's been some talk about other people having more serious accidents, but I can assure you as someone who, with my not in this regular... I know there's been some talk about other people having more serious accidents, but I can assure you, as someone who, with commitment in this region area, goes down to Chalice to help people who have gone into the harbour, every accident that I've been to is serious. Although there's perhaps no fatal injury so far in our area, for people going into the harbour at any time or crashing into the bank, as the motorbike did there recently, it is a serious accident. Point three I'd like to make is there's been much discussion, particularly in the media, about this project improving access to schools. But what it's done, particularly in publicity I've seen, is focus on access to primary schools. And I make the point that the vast majority of people who could gain from option C are intermediate and high school students. There is a huge number from Broad Bay right through to Vauxhall who could then have access to Bayfield, to Huna Intermediate, my own son Kings and to Queens next door. There are actually far more pupils affected as intermediate and high school students. And I make the point, probably far more likely to bike or walk to school contained in that area. The final point I'd like to make, though, is that option C does something wonderful. It actually unlocks for us all the other money that you've invested around the city. I looked at what's happened in the South Dunedin cycleway, which is in its final stages now. Option C actually connects the peninsula to the rest of the city. It means this is not about Vauxhall Glenfellow. It's about people in Broad Bay being able to bike to university. It's about people in McCandrie Bay being able to go to South Dunedin for their shopping. It's about connecting the city with the peninsula. People will be able to bike out to McCandrie Bay or walk the pathways as they do now. So in conclusion, I'd like to thank the council for what you've done. I don't envy you at all your decision, but I do speak strongly in favour of option C. Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay. Questions, councillors?
Sorry, I started on the speech and I have to ask a bit of you, Björn.
Do you think I could ask it quick?
Would you be prepared for a targeted rate? I've thought about this particular Vauxhall Glenfellow and at a personal level, although I already pay them three thousand dollars a year in rates, I could see a direct financial payback from having this walkway and would be happy to pay for it.
Council, please.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Lindsay. I just, you made a question about the number of people living between Vauxhall and you said McCandrie Bay. I've narrowed it down to Burns Point to Rosehill Road. And could you just give me an idea of how many people do live?
I don't know, Lindsay. There's not a lot of people actually in that chunk.
I thought you said, yeah, I thought you said the greatest number. Did you not say that?
In your own, in the council's own documents, it says that the greatest population is in that area.
Well, I think that's our goal, actually.
Counselor Hawkins?
Thank you. I'm pleased you brought up the idea of, or the issue of secondary school students commuting. During the submission yesterday, I was told by the chair of the municipal community board that that wasn't so much of an issue because high school students had too many books and were unlikely to bike. Could you, as a parent of a teenage secondary schooler, can you comment on that?
Riley would desperately love to bike to school. Riley's got two mates in McCandrie Bay who he would desperately love to bike to school with. And we have another poor boy who lives just down the other side of Chalice, who would also bike to Kingshoe with Riley. I can guarantee you, if that side ways there, he'd be biking tomorrow.
And another thing, you haven't mentioned it, but it is in your submission around heritage buildings. And you suggest it may be useful to consider options for a quote-unquote stick for those who allow their properties to deteriorate to the point where demolition becomes required. Do you have any suggestions as to what shape that stick might look like?
Well, if we're talking about targeted rates, one of the things that I would suggest is a targeted rate for empty buildings. For landlords who allow their buildings to not have tenants, the rate should go up ten percent every year of the building's empty.
Immediately or after a certain period of emptying?
Well, after two or three weeks. I'm joking aside, I think that there are buildings in Dunedin that are allowed to deteriorate because it makes sense, because that's the easiest way to get them knocked down. And I think there are certainly stories of landlords who are holding on to buildings for land banking reasons and holding on to them empty doesn't make sense to me as a resident who wants to see my city look beautiful.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Maurice Prindigas?
This is just, this is just that you realise it's just a bid on mine's behalf to catch up on the question status.
Could you ask them while we have error too, Mike?
Welcome, Maurice.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You had the next five minutes of error teaching.
About that. I have to beg your indulgence, it's seventy years of high living and low thinking's done nothing for some of my faculties, not least my hearing. So I have to beg your indulgence if I don't hear you well. But that aside, I'm here primarily, well, initially, I think that issue about ethical investment has no place at annual plan and I think people who talk ethics have to be very, very careful. This is council, and I don't mean this council, I mean this authority historically has got a bit of baggage in this respect. And I would say people in glass houses should not throw stones. So I will just leave it at that. I'll move on to this Moscow pool. And let's, let's start at the beginning and everything has a foundation. So the foundation for this argument is that there will be no pool. Now, we know that because the council is well-oiled and debt, and to your credit, you have made it clear that no debt-funded new projects will happen in the foreseeable future. Now, what happens, and I have a bit of knowledge of the function of level authorities, is you have these people banging at your ankles and you've got to give them some playdough. So this proposal, a thirty thousand dollars, is what former chief executive of this council, Murray Douglas, used to call drop dead money. And nobody quite knows what might be done with it. There are some noble sentiments always issued. But nobody quite knows what's going to happen to it. And worse still, we now know that the community board, without my support as a member, has advocated this to a trust, the members of which I don't know. And I read in today's paper, a man who, I think is a perfectly decent gentleman, promoting a further twenty thousand dollars. Now, I don't agree with that. I'm an elected member, I don't agree with that. That person stood for election to the community board and failed, and I'm not trying to judge him for that, but it seems a bit perverse that you can stand for a board, not be elected, but still have control of the board's funds. And I don't say total control. The problem we have in life is that, allow me to quote Charles Darwin, who once said, "Ignorance begets confidence more frequently than does knowledge." And what he was saying was that stupid people, because they don't know that they're stupid, never lose their confidence. Yet more talented people, who do have some talent, smack themselves in the head when they make a mistake and they have some doubt and self-confidence diminishes. So the reality in life is that we find that, what Darwin was saying was that is why we find institutions led by idiots with talented people languishing in the shadows. Now, I don't want to personalise this, but we have a situation, I believe, with this pool where it's been led by a group of individuals that don't have a lot of talent. And I know that's been judgmental, but how else can I make the point that this thirty thousand dollars, if you offer it, is likely to be wasted? They have, we have people with huge egos and little talent in leadership roles throughout the country. And you give them some money and I'll spend it at Hilton Hotels and Club memberships and not have a lot to show for a lot of else. So this is the risk we get when you throw right there money, or what is called drop dead money, to keep people at bay. It will keep them at bay for a couple of years. There's no question about that. It gives this council the breathing space for this term at least. But I'm sorry to be so, I suppose I am being judgmental, but I can't help, you can't put in what God left out. That's how I see things. And that money should not be offered. I don't think it's money well spent, especially, and Michael Lord made the point there, made a reference to the rates he pays. We all pay rates that are climbing annually and maintenance on lots of core activities is dropping away. We can see it on the roads. And my final comment was a reference to a plea to reinstate the road seal extension that we had historically, from a mental motion in nineteen eighty-nine. That was one of the few things that rural people could say, that, yep, that's good, we've got some, we're going to get some road seal. I see Mike promoting a targeted rate for the pool. We might have to put a targeted rate on Marshall Road because I was responsible for a significant amount of money being spent on that road. And I think Mike, you really should be careful when he talks about targeted rates. He's a good man. I'm not saying he's not a good man. But he needs to be careful, some of the, well, some of the political suggestions that he's making. I thank you for your time. I appreciate you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your observations about elected and appointed people being elected and appointed beyond the levels of competence. I think you're quite right in some cases. Counselor Vaughan?
I don't know where to start. First question, first question is when you're talking about people with little talent, is that unformentioned or?
Sorry?
I'm just wondering if you mean me? Hey, look, now, the question regards targeted rate tomorrow's was related to the cycleways on the peninsula. And I was actually asking it on Kate's behalf. As far as Marshall Road ceiling, you said in your submission about responding to that. I actively wanted to have a return to the ceiling budget, but just, look, at the moment, money doesn't really allow, we haven't got a lot of money in the budget that's spent on other areas, that's why I'm here. And I would love to see the ceiling budget resumed at some point. And it's only a matter of time and it will happen again. I mean, we can cut it off and be resilient or cut from our budgets for a certain point of time, but in time, we're going to have to get on top of our debt and those things will resume.
Yes, I understand. I was taking the proverbial to some extent. But if we could just get the focus off cycles and get on to real issues, that would be nice.
Counselor Hawkins?
Thank you. Thanks for presenting to us this morning with such confidence, Mr. Prindigas. Putting aside the question of funding for the swimming pool complex or the aquatic facilities in Moscow, do you accept that there is at least a need or a strong desire or both in the community for such development?
There is, but that whole need has been predicated by meetings and these fervent gatherings where nobody has addressed the cost. Admittedly, like, if you say to somebody, would you like an alley, of course you would. And that's basically the parallel. This is how it's working. So everybody says they want a pool, but nobody seems to be addressing the real cost and the capacity in relation to the council's already debt, existing debt. All that has to be measured and it's not happening.
Did you attend the Moscow annual plan meeting where that detail was actually given up?
No, it wasn't. No, it was all right at the time.
Counselor Mizet?
Maurice, your hearing may be failing, Maurice, but it's good to see you've still got a bit of spirit going for you.
Thank you.
Would you, talking about your drop dead money, would you accept that there are some very creditable people in Moscow Tyre area and in Dunedin that have indicated that they would be willing to help, whether it's seven or eight years or even ten years? So I guess the question is, you know, it's, do you still think that, given that this trust is set up, which is a relatively modest amount of money that's been given and could very well attract other funds, do you think that's unreasonable?
No, if the trust had performance in its midst, we don't know who they are. I was an elected member, don't know who they are. And I want to know who a couple of them are. And I'm not trying to beg individuals at all. It's just that we're throwing money over the fence at an unknown audience. We don't know the performance and it's just too, and I believe the motive is to make the problem go away for a while. The reality is, if I might say so, is that Tony Avery, I believe is on record at that meeting that Kate referred to, as saying that the existing pool could be upgraded pretty smartly for about two point five million dollars. Now, I can't see why there's no merit in that when you might be waiting seventy years for a pool. For a grand pool, why not consider their more modest target of upgrading the existing pool? And Tony Avery, I understand is on record of saying that two point five million dollars will give you that.
Thank you, Maurice.
No worries. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Maurice Roy, Penwood.
I know just an earlier, so I might have got some applause when they sat there and I was a bit disappointed. That was the difference.
Welcome, Bea.
Hi. I'm Sasha. I'm here for the council.
The next focus is yours to monopolise as you wish.
Thank you. Right, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to my submission. In my written submission that you, that I sent in, I just said that I wanted to speak to the stadium review and I've written up main details of that, just for convenience of putting italics bits that I won't read out and I've decided that I will just read the other bits and it should only take five minutes. Right, I'd like to express my support for the stadium review announced a few months ago. Due to concerns expressed by various members of the community and my own growing concerns about the stadium issue, I decided to inquire into spending by DVML through Lord Ma. It soon became clear that inappropriate spending had been occurring for some time within DVML. And just one example is hotel bills for up to three hundred and fifty US dollars per night. And there's many more examples I could give you. There's also a purchase, this is from invoices that I received officially. There's purchase of boys t-shirts, gloves, hat, chewing gum, shaving gear, bottles of wine, et cetera. And these are not business expenses. It's clear from some of the expenditure claimed that there's an ingr-. that there's an ingrained sense of entitlement, which is unacceptable. I understood that council staff have been committed to curbing their budgets because of the debt problem and were unhappy to see the unbridled spending occurring within DVML. It wasn't without its difficulties to obtain this information. DVML didn't release it willingly. DVML treated the request as an imposition rather than an obligation. The purpose of acquiring official information is an, is an important check on how public officers use public money or carry out their duties. Without it, unbridled corruption could occur. Unfortunately for the Carisbrook Stadium Trust, they also operated inappropriately, never dreaming that a group of citizens, including myself, would request information officially to expose the inappropriate spending. Why has this group of citizens continued to obtain information about the construction of the stadium? After all, it's now built and why don't people just move on, as some say? I'd like to explain why many people have not let go as would normally be expected. Some of you may recall after the Christchurch earthquake, there was a news item on TV1's close-up programme. Shock and horror was expressed over invoices being sent to Christchurch residents for repair of their chimneys damaged by the quake. These invoices were for two thousand dollars and criticism, sorry, criticism was expressed at so little detail, just stating labour materials, two thousand dollars. And at the time, there were questions of possible fraud. Well, those quake invoices pale into petty significance compared with the CST invoicing. The CST presented millions of dollars worth of invoices to the DCC with merely two words on them, trust costs. And furthermore, this is after the Auditor General stated in his September two thousand and seven report that no payments would be made to the CST without detailed invoices. The former DCC Chief Financial Officer also sent me a letter in October two thousand and seven stating that no CST invoices would be paid without third-party invoices to support them. It was recently stated in an, in an official information response that these third-party invoices do not exist. In response, Mr. Farley has now produced some paperwork which the DCC is processing. This should have been done at the time and not retrospectively. When discussing this with a lawyer, I said that the CST invoice process left the door wide open for fraud. The lawyer's response was, not an open door, Bev, but a bloody great cavity. I emphasise that I am not saying that fraud occurred. What I am saying is the process was so flawed that no one would know whether fraud had occurred or not. And you may be interested to know that there's no statute of limitations on private or public fraud. According to the CST financial statements presented to the Charities Commission, more than seventy-one million dollars of public money went through this trust. Every single dollar must be accounted for. Personally, I think it appalling that the process was so sloppy. I've also found other unexplained discrepancies in some of their financial reporting, but I will deal with that in another forum. Another reason why a group of citizens are still investigating the stadium is because we believe criminal activity may have occurred. So the issue is not whether you are pro or anti-stadium, but whether you are pro or anti-corruption. In order to save time, I'd like to table for your information items one, two, H below, which I see as outcomes from the stadium review and would welcome any questions during question time. Finally, the inappropriate spending which occurred in the CST and continued through DVML when CST staff transferred to DVML needs to be addressed. The community were provided with misleading information throughout the stadium construction, but thankfully, there is a democratic process in place which allows these matters to be exposed to prevent this from happening in the future and bring those responsible to account.
Bea, and thank you for laying it out so clearly on the written part. You can improve it, it's good. Questions, councillors?
You'll be pleased that I'm not asking for any money. I'm hoping that you'll be able to get some money through, through the efforts of this group of ours.
About as well, councillor.
And thank you for that clarity. Do you now feel that you are being listened to or that you're concerned are being thought about and dealt with at all?
Uh, he said no, um. I, I think the, the council staff I have found very good in terms of, um, and now I'm talking about the DCC staff, um, with, through information requests and, and the group that I'm working with, um, I basically took on the role of, of, of requesting the official information and so it's sort of gone through me and so it does look like I'm making lots of requests, which I am. But it was to, for convenience, um, for the staff really, so they didn't have to deal with a whole lot of different people making requests. Um, I must say the DVML staff are, are a different matter altogether. Um, they sent me some information which I couldn't even read. Um, and so I had to go back and say, please, we scan this. They sent me invoices where one part was chopped out and other bits on, um, overlapping. Uh, and they don't answer all the questions that you, that you ask and I do try to streamline my questioning as um efficiently as possible. Um, I guess you'll notice in one of the, um, one of my, one of my items, uh, where, item number four, um, where I asked the council to make a formal request to the CST to front up with those three one million dollar donations, which was excitedly announced in the ODT back in March two thousand and seven. But none of those donations have seen the, the, the light of day. And I did send an email to the former councils before the last election and there were three councillors who responded and no one else bothered to respond. But I'm actually really serious about that because those three one million dollar donations were all part of the um laying out of, um, of the private funding and for, for that project. And I do think that, um, it should be followed up. Um, and uh, this could, you know, bring three million dollars into the council if pressure was put on the CST to, to front up with this money. Um, Farley said he had it. He said at times that he had, had some private funding in his, in his pocket and that was just complete and utter nonsense. Because as we know, the private funding for construction was a complete and utter lie. Um, this was proven in the PWC report back in May two thousand and twelve, that only seven hundred thousand of the private funding was used for construction. The rest of, of what is coming in is for um revenue. And this is, um, this is where a lot of us were concerned beforehand um that, that the so-called private funding wasn't going to be used for construction. Um, that it was going to be used for revenue, uh, but they kept insisting, no, it's for construction. So they basically misled the community, they misled the council. Um, and there was nothing we could do about it. They misled the courts too, in our Stop the Stadium court case, the High Court case. And then the Court of Appeal, they basically lied in court. And I do use that word lied um deliberately because it was a lie. And that will be dealt with in another forum.
So Lisa. Well, Mr. Chair, I'm actually quite uncomfortable with this. Not so much the original submission, but what's been tabled today and what's been said uh contains a number of allegations and accusations. I don't know whether they're true or not.
Oh, sure you, they are. Sorry.
But um, I think we have a process issue and it seems to me that whatever people say about other people, the people who are having um stuff thrown at them have the right to, to respond. And the very least we have to do is actually refer these comments and a lot of what's in the italics um is what I'm referring to, um, to the individuals who've been named in these papers so that when we discuss whatever we do with them later, um, we have access to any response they wish to have. I mean, I, I think this is extremely different territory legally. So you're requesting that we obtain that in? I think we have, I think we have a responsibility to circulate this to the people who have been referred to, the three that I've spotted, uh, in this document and then we ask for their response if they wish to give it to us, to what's been said in these documents.
I'd actually be happy with that and I would actually really like to hear their response. I have written to Sir Ian Eadke and I, I copied in his lawyers into the email, but I didn't get a response. So um, if you can get a response from him, I'd be more than happy.
Councillor Thompson.
So I'll give some comments about it. I, I think we should discuss it, um, but I don't necessarily agree with Councillor Benson's point that we should get them, that this information, I'm sure they know about completely.
Well, I'm, I'm not adverse to having that discussion, but I don't need to have it like that.
I'm not, definitely not. There'll be no news to the people.
But um, I think what Councillor Benson's point was, talking about is a process issue and we, we will discuss that as a council and decide whether we sue that. But we don't have to make that call now because it's for the purpose of informing our deliberations.
Um, I'm sorry.
So councillor Thompson.
This question doesn't really relate to the more substantive issues that you've raised, but I tend to get a bit pedantic when it comes to your accounting thing. I just wonder, do you accept that the, um, that whether the private funding came in at the front and was immediately spent on construction or came in progressively, um, it would still have been revenue either way? It would have had to have been treated as revenue either way?
Well, I've actually, um, as a result of an official information request, got it in writing from DVML that the, the, the private funding is being used for their basic operating. It's not being used for, um, the, you know, the construction or the, or the debt. It's for their basic business expenses like electricity, wages, et cetera. That's what some of the private funding's been used for.
I'm, I'm, I'm not wanting to engage in, in that argument and I don't want to detract from the wider issues, but um, I'm, my, my point was, or my question is that, um, that, that money would have to have been treated as revenue, regardless of whether it came in at the front end, regardless of what it was spent on, it would have had to have been treated as revenue either way.
I'm not sure if I understand, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not an accountant. Um, my expertise is immense, but.
It's a good thing, neither am I, you're a bigger pedant than I am now, but.
But, but it was meant to be part of that one eighty-eight million and it wasn't. I think that's the issue that I'm trying to get across.
Councillor Carter. Did you have, sorry?
I'll leave it, thanks.
Right, councillor Benson.
Thank you. At point three on that list that you, of the outcomes you're expecting, you make a statement about, uh, suggesting that the stadium is costing the council twenty million a year. Would you care to just break that down into kind of revenue from the stadium or costs that, uh, debt servicing or whatever?
Yeah, um, I haven't.
Come for that figure?
Um, I haven't got the, the breakdown with me. I know that in the, the draft annual plan, it's down as nine point one two five million, is it? Something, something like that.
Nine point two five.
Yeah, and some of that sub-venture payment and then the um subsidies from the council. Um, but there are other costs which are on top of that, which are not included and I'm sorry, I just don't take those figures with me. I can't actually even remember. I've, I've seen two different people um do analysis of it and, but I'll be quite happy to, if you send me an email and remind me, I'll get that to all the council, you know?
Thank you.
Any further questions? Bea, thank you for your submission. And we've got the end of it.
Um, could I just, do you mind if I just asked Councillor Benson what it was and here that he had concerns about?
I think he's explained it. It's a matter of naming people and we, we'll have to decide what's proper within our processes with regard to how we use this.
Yeah, I, I did actually um pass this through a lawyer and the lawyer was fine without what I said.
And I don't think any of us, um, don't appreciate that. It's about what's appropriate for us and how it's appropriate for us to use.
Fine. Okay, thanks very much.
All right, Bruce Spur. Welcome, Bruce.
Thank you.
Now, you're representing an organisation, so if you have ten minutes.
No, I'm making a personal submission and it's not being made on behalf of any society or group. I appreciate that many notable persons and organisations, both in New Zealand and overseas, support the continuation of water fluoridation. However, as Galileo noted, in questions of science, the authority of a thousand is not with the humble reasoning of a single individual. In my submission, I drew attention to the view of Philippe Grandjean, professor and chair of environmental medicine at the University of Southern Denmark and adjunct professor of environmental health at the Harvard School of Public Health, who has devoted his career to studying how environmental chemicals affect children and their brain development. He, together with his colleague Philippe Landrigan, Ikhan's School of Medicine at Mount Sinai New York, have found fluoride to be a developmental neurotoxicant. They noted that disorders of neuro behavioural development affect ten to fifteen percent of all births and that the prevalence of autism spectrum disorder and attention deficit hyperactivity disorder seem to be increasing worldwide. They found that the antisocial behaviour, criminal behaviour, violence and substance abuse that seem to result from early life exposures to some neurotoxic chemicals result in increased needs for special educational services, institutionalisation and even incarceration. They observed that low poorly quantified, that low poorly quantified such behavioural and social consequences of neurodevelopmental toxicity are potentially very costly and that their prevention was highly cost-effective. They concluded by expressing their very great concern that children worldwide are being exposed to unrecognised toxic chemicals that are silently eroding intelligence, disrupting behaviours, truncating future achievements and damaging societies. They called for the promotion of policy development aimed at protecting vulnerable populations against chemicals that are toxic to the brain without needing unrealistic amounts of scientific proof. Grandjean and Landrigan considered that it is now established that fluoride can cause neurodevelopmental toxicity and clearly would not favour the addition of a known developmental neurotoxicant to a water supply. In my view, it is time for the Legency to counsel the stop fluoridation for our children's sake.
Thank you, Bruce. Questions, councillors? And you'll be aware that we've had a number of submissions, so if there are no questions, it's because they've been asked of other submitters. Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
Mark Thatcher. Not here either. Well, councillors, we have reached a point where we would have had, we would be straight to lunch and I think we will because there are, there's no one here to submit and there's been a couple of ten-minute ones that have not shown. So that's why we appear to be back, back on track pretty much. So we will reconvene, since the next um submit is not due here at one thirty, we will reconvene at one thirty. Um, do we want to have, while we can, um, a discussion around your issue, Dayton? Is this something you want to do in public or?
I think it would be necessary because of the night.
Okay, we will find an opportunity to do that. All right, we'll be back here at one thirty. And I think the lunch is in the O T R room. Now, our first submission for the afternoon, the fiddle of the afternoon, is the digital office, the Q and A, wearing your hats for the next 10 minutes.
Thank you. So we've met with the council a couple of times now on terms of our projects, so well, this is briefly run through those, and just to ensure you've got paperwork in this folder, it's got to be pretty high, so there are a couple of videos to watch very briefly as well, so much we can do. So, digitally connected city, one of our key objectives for this strategy. So the wifi project we talked about at the Monarch, the Tarijo Railway, the Marri, and T W R, the power station on U F B and R B I, you've mentioned that before, and the work there to speed rate this process. Digital journeys, we mentioned it last time, as an assessment tool to help small businesses to go online, and the card they flashed around, which is this little card here showing that the productivity gain for businesses is theirs, we take it, with some good guidance for how to use the internet. Following up from this one, we have two training courses locked in in May with D C C and the Chamber of Commerce, where we attract businesses to come along, and we'll spend, sorry, we'll spend some time with them, working through the assessment, and providing free advice about how to use the internet and online services better to aid productivity for this whole. So those two events are locked in in May, and that's another place since we last talked. Tablets in school, that project's continuing, we have four more devices go into Tari High School last week. Digital ambassador went along and trained the use of those with that school. One of the things we do know is that teachers are a key focus in this goal. Thirty-three percent of all teachers are over five years of age, quite a big category there of teachers who need advice on how to use technology, and as a consequence, we have a project to re-support the good use of technology in the classroom. We've got brief videos to show you here about that project in action, to show you the sort of things it achieves with schools, trade associations, primary, secondary schools and so on, so brief video. Very quiet video, if you can all let breathe.
You want to just stop and... Anybody from IT experience?
Please go on.
Melanie and I started to take care, we saw a whole frame, mainly colleagues were struggling with the other smart device, so that's a technical, that's a technical, what we do, we actually should educate them, because technology is far, and once you understand it and are confident with it, there's just all sorts of possibilities. We feel that if people in conference room was setting the device up to work for their tech, it's a confidence issue. We find a lot of people haven't actually installed apps on their smartphones and tablets. With, as we said, apps taught, it's not just downloading apps, but how they make full choices about what apps to download. Through the digital office, the name of the digital office, who have the brackets borders of what we do and tech teach, they make connection with the community childcare association, who have tablets in the classroom, and what the association want to do is instill their intention on efficient, confident use of tablets. So we went along and educated the teachers on what their tablet is capable of, getting them to be confident and familiar with its settings, and how they make it work for them in the classroom. Not only to benefit the teachers, but also benefit the children as well. So what we saw, it started with the training, the teachers were a little hesitant, not really familiar with the tablet, turned into their training session, being very confident, very excited about its teaching, and just really wanting to get into it and start using it, and that was amazing to see, they were great.
Okay, so that's our teacher training programme in place, that's the D C C A, the organisation training there, and there's some more training planned for May, and of course we follow up this as well, we help them make sure that they've got the right sort of use within that organisation. So we've covered some things, our ambassador scheme, sorry, our ambassador scheme, where we provide advice to businesses, and they figured they're 250 hours, group centres, and to date this year. Do you think I want to show you as well, there's a few weeks ago, we had our P S P Homes graduation, so we're involved with this programme in supporting its implementation across Dunedin, and I've got a short video to show you on this graduation at Toito a few weeks ago, and they also had a new scheme there of bring your own device, which has been piloted in Dunedin, and will first do this across the country, and I think it's a really good way of demonstrating some of our community work.
So the schools select families, we put a part of recycled computers into the school for them to train on, the school hosts that part, and that becomes the school squad. They do 20 hours training, usually over a complete term, and they pay $50 for that, they get the recycled computer in their home, a subsidised internet charge for 12 months and 12 months' tuition for it. And that's how the project works, the school support us, we support the school by supplying computers and an internet connection into their homes. We've got through 470 families, but the waiting list is about 200. We go back after 12 months, so that's when we pick up on the parents and what they've done with it, what their kids have done with it, and the stories are just amazing, really are. It's not just the benefit for the kids, it's the benefit for the whole family. A solo mum with three kids, sitting behind on a benefit, she now runs a online business, she said she'd never done, and she can do it, she's come off the benefit, she can do it now, and still be home for five, six, three, four weeks, and the parents have gone probably, not a child will sit at home, don't know what to do to, we can do this as well. The great role models for their kids, the kids are leaving as well, the opportunities will even just carry on. The BYD scheme is still a pilot scheme, so what we've done is we're actually buying the tablets and giving them an interest free loan, here it's a payment of over 12 to 24 months. Now interest, it's covered by insurance, but it becomes easy from day one, they click, take it to school, I'll even get the first graduation last month. Both schools are starting their visits next week, and all the kids, there's like 60 kids early in each school, ready to take their devices and start their business.
So it's great that that scheme's going so well, and have a BYD scheme in Dunedin is a great way. So last but not least, I want to briefly update you on GigaTown, so Josh has got a few stats here on how well that's going across the community, and I'll real quickly about engaging the community, so.
Yeah, so GigaTown, we're about halfway through the GigaTown competition, and we've got a lot of people within the community, within different aspects of the community, really engaged in this competition. We've got communities who have donated around 784 hours, we've got 7,000, well, over 7,400 Facebook fans who are just doing some really massive work in that social space to gain points for Dunedin, and also on Twitter, there's a lot of great conversations happening on there. I've engaged with 12 schools as part of GigaTown School Video Competition, and we've got more to come back to me on that. We're having weekly catch-ups for the campaigners in different parts of Dunedin, tweet-ups and photo walks, I've talked at lots of school assemblies, we've got a school video event planned in June in partnership with Otargot Polytechnic and Cyberon Computers, and we've had just over $20,000 donated in Contra and in kind to the competition through prizes, through websites, through all sorts of different aspects, so that's really a brief update on GigaTown.
So that's us in the chat, so some of the educational programmes we've run, some of the economic programmes we've run, some of the community work, we've showed a few videos there about this training solution, and also computer programs.
Thank you. Any further questions, councillor Cowell?
I think you're doing some fabulous things there. I would benefit though from having some idea of how much the things you do cost, and some figures and things, I've, your chairman has kindly provided me with the 2013 annual things, which show you've got some money left over, and I'm sure you don't have at the moment, but we're getting no, we haven't got any financial things, we've got nothing that says this is the amount we're spending on GigaTown, we've got nothing that says, oh, are we leveraging off any other businesses, we've got nothing that actually does that. So the first thing is, is there any way you can provide us, we've had no feedback apart from horrible things as far as I can see, one, is there any way you can provide us with that before next week when we're, some more up-to-date things and some figures about what's happening with the money? And secondly, would you be happy to get to put the digital office through the normal grants process we have, because that would have picked up some of that, because you'd apply and you'd put your paperwork in, you'd say who's providing other money and what's happening? So there's a certain discipline in the grant system in general that we don't seem to have had anything in a reporting sense.
Sure. I don't know much about that process, I'm sorry, but certainly I report to the leadership forum at the GigaTrust, and do a proper loss statement to them, and also to the 2020 Trust, our funders like P S P Homes, I do my financial reports for those meetings, and also I report back, well, actually our accounts go to accountants, and last year we had our accounts audited as well, so that information is certainly available. As we go through the process and practice get advice and discuss on that, if you want to do a different process, I'm fine, objection to that, so, I mean, very open, our funding schemes, and I've got no problem in briefing on that, yeah, so.
So can we have things more up-to-date than a year ago, and some more information generally about finances for next week?
I haven't got the, I gave some of the accountants about two weeks ago, so I could ask them if I can get that to you, what do you think this means?
Even in draft form, because we've just got nothing.
Okay, sure, I know what you're saying, certainly if I could do that, some rules would be, yeah.
Councillor Hawke.
Thank you. I have to agree with councillor Cowell, but I find that on the basis of this, quite hard to make a decision as to whether or not funding, let alone increased funding of this project is valid or not, I'm not saying that it is, but it is very hard to make that decision, and the other thing about the civic grants process is not so much about, well, it is finances, but also how it fits in with our other strategic, council's other broad strategic objectives, which is what we require of recipients of civic grants, and there's nothing necessarily in here that ties into the work. I mean, have you considered those, and does that exist in written form somewhere, how the work that the digital office is doing achieves our broader social wellbeing and economic development objectives?
So the digital strategy, which we agreed a few years ago, had very strong alignment to the long-term community plan and the key focuses of the city at the time, we also obviously aligned very much the economic strategy, so there's a number of projects in there that align to what we're doing. So the strategy itself was very closely aligned to the long-term goals of the council, and also the key objectives of the economic strategy too. I'm not familiar with the grants process, I'm sorry, so I'm not too sure what that process is, but happy to be eyes on that.
But this predates the current economic development strategy?
Yes, and the social wellbeing strategy, this was signed on, this digital strategy came through.
Yeah, just for your information, the digital strategy was adopted by council, it's council process.
And just the other thing, and I agree also, you're doing a lot of great things, but I wonder what your measurement, I mean, if we can't measure something, it's hard to improve it, I wonder what your measurement metrics are for these broad themes that you're trying to accomplish?
So, I mean, we really, we use the strategy as our guiding document, that's our vision for what we're trying to achieve here, so we aim to achieve objectives of that with what funding we have, whether it's, because of course we have no project funding, we don't find project funding, so the key thing that I spend a lot of time doing is trying to find out ways to fund these projects, so we align ourselves to the strategy and the goals and the strategy. Now, I mentioned last time that these goals and projects change, because things, priorities change, you know, the teacher training project wasn't simply included three years ago, but now it's very relevant, very important, so we funded that project, and that's now proceeding. So that's all measures, is what's in the digital strategy. We've also got an S L A, of course, with the council, so you have an S L A with the council, with, sorry, yeah, the council, and that's in there, has the targets and measures in that as well, so we, you know, I think we could get better at this, I agree, we could quite make some better metrics in there, more visual metrics, and that's something to take on board. And throughout this whole process of that, I've learnt a lot more, how to do more accountable, that I completely understand there. But I think that, you know, from my view, whenever it comes to, you get lots of good ideas in the digital space, everyone's got a great idea about what you can do in technology and how important it is. Bring it back to the strategy, does it align? Is it one of the goals of the strategy to achieve this? If it is, then great, we'll try and find some funding, get that across the line, that's what we've been doing for the last two years or so. If it doesn't meet the strategy, it doesn't get good, and we've done that a few times, because it has to really focus on what try and achieve is in the digital strategy of Dunedin. And then I report to the leadership trust on my activities, a lot of meetings, which are formal meetings, and we've also got S L A with the D C C. Now, I think we could get better at forming yourselves, we've done it annually before, we could get better in forming yourselves, what we're up to, and I really welcome that.
Councillor MacTachey.
I'm just wondering, you guys were pointed in the direction of a civic grant application when you submitted your form, were you, submitted your application? No?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not familiar with that process at all. Councillor Wong.
Thank you. How does this, the request that you're putting into Spain, or requesting from council, relate to other communities around the country, what they're spending on their digital strategies?
Oh, well, I think it's a small drop in the ocean. I mean, I've just spent a few days in Fongare, and flew up there, back, and spent some time with the guys up there, because they've had a leadership forum in place for, the digital office equivalent in place for a number of years, and they're very much way advanced in what they're doing economically and socially and in community benefit, and, you know, they're very much committed to that. There's three staff in Auckland doing this, there's a number of people being discussed in Canterbury, so I think that people have really seen the importance of this. Digital technology is so important to social wellbeing, economic growth, it's critical. And I think that this is, we'd love to ask for some more, and, you know, but I think that this will give us a good stepping stone to get things through the board. I'm really excited by the opportunity, if we receive the full amount, to have a full-time role in Dunedin, and really try and drive forward the digital strategy and some of the goals of that. But in Paris and the rest of the country, it's quite a small amount.
I'm just wondering if they could clarify how much they had from the D C C in this financial year, this year?
My understanding was, because last tranche was...
Sixty.
Sixty.
Thank you.
Does that include or not include the funding that was granted to GigaTown campaign?
It was...
It doesn't include it.
So it's 120,000?
Josh is employed by the E D U, seconded to digital office, correct?
So, this is all of itself, yes. Any further questions? No? Thank you, Stuart, thank you, Josh. Thank you, Shannon. Corina Pedersen.
Corina Pedersen. Welcome, Corina. The next five minutes is yours.
Lovely. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today. My name is Corina Pedersen, and my children Andy and DC. I strongly support the current plan for the road safety improvements to Portobello and Harrington Point Roads. A sequence of work is established to address safety issues on these roads, but particularly in excess and driven towards up areas with high pedestrian numbers. There have been no significant changes since the order was established initially to necessitate a review. The facts have not changed. The current plan was correct and it is still correct. I grew up in Broad Bay and am now raising family in this wonderful community. I regularly walk my daughters to Broad Bay School along Portobello Road. In my original submission, on, I think it's page three, I received photos of my children walking to school. Like many Broad Bay families, we are very heavily concerned about the deficiencies in the footpaths in Broad Bay. Significant stretches a little more than a slightly widened road. Sections with real curb narrow at single five in precarious proximity to vehicles. We do not let our children walk to school by themselves. And while the road remains as it is, we will also not contemplate them biking to school. As well as sharing many services and amenities, Broad Bay and Portobello are physically very close together. The four point two kilometres of road that was due to start at the exterior under the current project encompasses the whole of both communities as well as the area between. Also in my submission, there are photos showing the road between Broad Bay and Portobello, where at least eight of our Broad Bay school pupils must commute twice daily. Like many families writing their submissions, safety concerns force our family to drive between these communities. We must drive to take our children to sports practice, to the dairy, to the toy library, to visit their families at Portobello, despite that being a short enough distance that my children would happily walk or bike. We have never walked or biked this section of road with our children and we will not until the road improvements are completed. Accident statistics support our concerns, showing that of the thirteen serious crashes on the whole length of Portobello and Harrington Point Roads in the past five years, eight of them were between Ken George Street in Broad Bay and Kerewika Street in Portobello. Councillor Bezette asked yesterday for statistics on incidents involving children on the road. And while I do not know of any car versus child accidents in recent times, thankfully, I am aware of a nasty child versus cyclist accident on Portobello Road within Broad Bay recently, which resulted in the child receiving a head injury and substantial lacerations to the legs. Many of our communities are very strongly in favour of the current plan and only the current plan. Because not only does it make the lives of people in our communities safer, but it's the only option which addresses the dangerous section of road between our communities. The current plan is the only option which completes the road between Broad Bay and Portobello before 2023. Option A does not, option B does not, and option C does not, complete that section of road. Work should not be delayed any longer. You have heard and read submissions from a diverse range of people from our local peninsula communities. You have heard from truck drivers and bus drivers stating that in order to negotiate some corners between Broad Bay and Portobello, they have no option but to cross the centre line. You heard from people at the Portobello meeting with mobility issues who have limited options to enjoy their community. We all see the obvious difference. A safe, accessible path is made to the community conclusion at McCandry Bay. You have heard angry and frustrated residents who have waited patiently for the road improvements in our communities to begin as planned, only to be told this year that the council is reviewing the sequence of work and our communities may now not be completed for nine years. This is unacceptable. The reason given at the annual plan meeting at Portobello for this review of sequence was that some submissions were received. This sounds incredibly inadequate, given the costs of this consultation, the disharmony created at either, either end of the peninsula is pitted against each other and the delays to the project and also the loss of faith in the council built by many residents. You have heard from all three peninsula schools, including McCandry Bay, whose section of road has been complete for several years. All three schools strongly support continuing with the current plan as soon as possible. Finally, you have heard from the most vulnerable members of our community and those whose safety will be most dramatically enhanced when the road improvements between Broad Bay and Portobello and Harwood are complete, and that is the children of our communities. My daughter Andy was one of the thirty two pupils at Broad Bay School who put in submissions. And I would like to finish today by inviting her to read the submission.
Yeah, DCC. I think it would be safer if you did the Broad Bay to Portobello section first so you can run, walk through it and bike to Portobello safely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Corina. Thank you, Andy. Questions, councillors? Hawke.
I've got two questions. One is one about, one, what do you think about speeding this whole project up? And whether you're supportive of that? And if that meant a rate rise or a targeted rate, would you be willing to consider that?
Oh, no, I don't support targeted rates for this project, so I believe.
Rates increase for this project? To get it done quicker?
I don't think that's for me to decide, really.
No, it's just one of the options that I'm considering in my mind as I'm going through. Most people want to see this whole thing done quickly.
Certainly, but I'm submitting that you stick with what's already planned, already budgeted for it and already scheduled.
Counselor Thompson.
I've got a couple of questions, Corina. One of them, I asked some others, so I'll ask it of you as well. And it, it relates to the fact that, and it's, it's particularly relevant to the Broad Bay end, perhaps more so than the Portobello end. But the majority of the houses, with the exception of some on symmetry point there, are on the other side of the road to where the, the walkway cycleway will be. And one of the issues that's going through my brain and trying to work all this out is around the relative safety of various areas and also what people's practice might be. Because one of the issues in, for example, in Broad Bay is will parents feel that it is more safe for their children to come down the hill and cross Portobello Road and then walk along what I acknowledge is an infinitely superior piece of walkway than the alternatives? And then cross back again at the school? And to what extent does that actually become potentially a more dangerous situation than, than walking along the back roads? Which I, I don't need convincing and not adequate roads.
Sure. We've all seen from McCandry Bay that a walkway on the water side can work very well. We can, we know that we can manage much more safely the kids crossing the road. And I, for one, would feel much happier, my children walking on a wide footpath separated from the traffic. And as you can see in the photos of the rewalk, in such a close proximity to the cars. Also another thing to note, and if you want to look at the maps of Broad Bay there, sixty percent of our pupils actually live from Francis Street towards Portobello. And all of those pupils have to walk on Portobello Road currently to get to school, there's sixty percent of them. So talking about the ones at the other end of the bay, they've got their quieter road routes. I don't know if they're going to walk down and use that. We are always going to walk and use the safe route. That is where we are separated from the traffic by more than the current scary distance that we are at the moment.
Okay, thank you. The other issue is around, there's a, there's a degree of anger that's coming through from quite a lot of submitters around the, the notion of that this might, you know, that in essence, something is felt promised and it might be not taken away, but delayed. And, but I, I wonder, is there also an awareness that this has actually changed a number of times? And this is, Plan A is not the original Plan A and the timeframe is not the original timeframe. For example, it got red up a couple of years ago with some extra funding that got voted into the process. There have been changes all the way along. Is, is the, is, do you rule out, I mean, do you see change as being a completely invalid process here? Or is it just this change?
No, no, certainly not. I think that the reason for the anger is that project, it was due to start very soon. Like, it's not that we've set, I can't provide this time, there's going to be some changes and we're going to. It's actually, we're within the year of them starting this project. It was imminent. It wasn't, yeah, it was an imminent project. Everyone was waiting for it, knew it was due to start then. And I think there was a lot of frustration at this, the changes.
Thank you. Counselor McCarver.
Thank you. The question, thank you, Corina. The question that I have, firstly, was there anything else that you wanted to point out on the map which you circulated?
No, it was really just to point out so that you can understand the contribution streets in my submission.
Yeah.
And also just to point out that, you know, that number of our students actually have to walk on Portobello Road. We don't have any option at the moment, either walk or drive.
Yeah. The, the question that I'm curious about is just in relation to the relative priority of the sections in Portobello and Broad Bay and the section in between. What we've heard from a number of submissions, submitters, is that given the relative speed and the relative whininess, the bit in between Broad Bay and Portobello is arguably more urgent than a township itself. Do you have a perspective on that?
Actually, no, I don't. I, I would like to see the whole lot, that whole Broad Bay to Portobello section completed as soon as possible, obviously. And my push is that that bit was started before the township. That's my push on it. I don't have a strong view of the security as well between. We, at the moment, I manage walking my children to school by holding the little one's hand. You know, we watch for traffic, we stop and we avoid events when there's big vehicles coming, all those sorts of things. So we can continue managing that, especially if we know that, you know, we're on the right track to getting something sorted here.
Thank you.
Counselor Hawke.
Thank you. Given the terrible incident you mentioned of pedestrian versus cyclist, and this project is a shared cycleway, walkway, are you not still concerned about safety when this is finished? I mean, do you have issues around that?
Well, the design that I've seen that was on the, in the annual plan showed a three metre cycleway and then a two metre footpath. So those two wouldn't, that interaction wouldn't have occurred.
Thank you.
Any further questions? None? Thank you, Corina. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Francine Bell. Francine here? Shane Sutherland.
Afternoon, councillors.
Welcome, Ben.
I'm one of the few people that actually live on the Portobello Road. So I see a lot of things that are going on in front of my house. And sometimes I stop people from walking around brian corners and I get abused for telling them what, telling how to do. But now I just sort of leave it. I'm not very good at picking which one is going to have a go at me or not. It's pretty scary sometimes.
As councillors, we feel that the same way.
Yeah. I'm the chairman of the Tagahaviri Incorporated and I, I see the widening of the road sort of would benefit the jetty and the wharf area around Portobello. The council, thankfully, much have paid most of the jetty and pontoon there, but it sort of needs to be finished off as far as the approaches to the, to the jetty. A lot of boats turn up there and they've got huge toilets where they go to the restaurants and the shop. And so they, they get off and they, they walk along the road. The existing footpaths either side of the road from the, from the jetty to the township are basically water tables, they're drains. They, if you want to walk on a flat piece of path, you have to walk on the road. Pedestrians really have been pushed way back. I mean, I've lived down there all my life and every time the road gets tar sealed, the white line creeps out another four inches. So that's been creeping into the footpath that was there. So there was a good footpath between the village and the, and the wharf. There used to be a lot of boats coming there, so you know, that was, that was catered for. But that's been eroded by the widening of the road. Also between the shop and the wharf is a straight piece of road. And of course, anyone who goes up and down the bay road can see that as an opportunity to pass. So not only do you have a footpath which aren't adequate, you've got people passing and you've got schoolchildren walking along with their sectorals. And the slope of the footpath just sort of brings them down towards the white line and they've got their backs to the road and they're talking with their friends. So it's a, there's a bit of a speed issue there, but it's also the nature of, the nature of the road. It's a straight piece and people drive to town from Harwood, gotta get past some tourists or a bus or whatever's in the way there. That's, you know, that's one of the points I wanted to make. There's, there's a lot of, in Portobello, there's quite a few B and Bs and accommodations. So there's a lot of visitors in the area. And, you know, they like to get out and have a, have a bit of a look around the peninsula, Portobello especially. And, you know, they've, they've got a sort of risk around these existing footpaths. So it's, it's not really a good look as far as, you know, tourists are looking at. So, you know, we, we hope that, I, the Tagahaviri Incorporated support the current option for the widening of the road between Portobello and Broad Bay. So these are my points. One other comment I was making was about the heritage. And I, there is a heritage fund for, for buildings. Why isn't there a heritage fund or included in that heritage fund, heritage items? The Tagahaviri, of course, is a, is a moving heritage item. It's not a building, but it's something that can connect the people to the heritage buildings. So it gives the people a fuller experience when moving to a building, et cetera.
Like a train?
That's right. But, you know, the train's already there, it's about sort of developing that train. I'm also talking about trams and the steam trains, cable cars, horse drawn vehicles. I mean, in the paper today, there was, they were talking about the, the prison, which is going to be a tourist attraction. If you had some sort of prison wagon, you could take people to the prison and, you know, there would be an experience from first getting on the wagon and taking it in the port and running around the place. But the groups and individuals who are trying to develop these ideas, they don't have a fund to go to like the people in the buildings. I do understand some other cities have a heritage fund for heritage items. And they are assets to the city. And during the off season, off peak times, these heritage assets can be loaned or leased out to, to different centres for events that they might like to use them for. Because, you know, the nature of it, they can go away and actually produce money. There was an instance a couple of years ago when we had some celebration on the, down at the wharf and we, the council paid quite a lot of money for a big yacht to come down from Mauka Sands. And it was only used for two days and then it went back again. So if we didn't own our own heritage items, we could, we could have that event every year, maybe two or three times a year. And if we had some sort of tourist thing happening, we could include it and that is what I was believing. Any questions?
Thank you, Shane. Councillors? Question?
Have you even, if anyone else, Chancellor asked my question quickly? Rates increase or rates, targeted rate, in order to get the cycleway going quicker?
Yeah.
Which I think is what everyone actually wants, is the whole thing going quickly. Would you have any aversion to either rates increase or a targeted rate? One specifically given from it to be?
If, if we're going to save money in the long, long run, you know, and I understand that some sort of targeted rate wouldn't be too much, or wouldn't think it might have to be a cap on it or something. But, you know, you'd have a good argument for that, I guess. And, and safety is always a good one. And the peninsula is a mainly. And the peninsula is a main, and I'm the driver of Dunedin and, you know, we, we need to really crank up what's on to offer down there. Especially with the ferry running over where people coming and going. And we wanna give them a good experience and we want to have a bit of flow in what we're doing.
Well, and taking that further, you, I can recall in some of your previous submissions, talked about the bike ability, bike, to take people over and bike back.
Hmm.
I mean, taking away from where you live now, would you seriously think that that's a proposition that you could put bikers out on any part of that at the moment?
Um, well, you, you could do, but you'd have to do it when the traffic weren't running, uh, you know, you're doing off-peak times like sort of between half ten and half eleven. You'd, you'd have to target when you have people on, on the road there because there are, there are busy times. Busy times like three o'clock, but we have logging trucks coming through the village at three o'clock. We have buses and everyone comes to pick their kids up, so there's a lot of things going on. Um, there's, there's just, uh, you know, one thing I'd like, another thing I'd like to say is that we'd like the adults to sort of put the children first because there are two schools down there. Um, the cyclists and the tourists that are probably gonna use the Glenfellow, the town part of the road. They're, chances are they're a bit older and they've, they've got their, um, their road license, they've got their car licence. But children, they, they don't think traffic and, you know, so it's important that the adults put them first and decide which is best. What they wanna, wanna, the pride is there.
Thank you. Councillor Evans.
Thank you. Um, thanks for all your excellent work with, um, LC Evans. Um, and I want to, in, in the context of what you're suggesting about heritage items, I wondered if you'd like to, um, give us your thoughts about the demise of Toowoa, which I thought was a great project and a project that cost the council quite a lot of money. Um, why did it, why did it not fly, so to speak?
Uh, well, like most of it's coming down to money and, and to do what they want to do, uh, was gonna cost, had to put a lot of capital into it. And then you basically had to create a market for it. There were things about Toowoa which, uh, were against it from the start, it's, it was sort of a quite a slow vessel. Um, if you compare it to something like the LC Evans, you know, we're, we're starting off fresh, but we're starting with something which costs a lot less. And, and my experience is it's best to start with something a bit smaller and, and start, uh, start creating a demand and then getting into a situation where you have a, by large boat. I mean, it's a shame that Toowoa wasn't saved, we, we could have, there would have been places that would have had it. Omarou probably would have had it up at their heritage wharf up there as a, as some sort of floating restaurant or something like that. Um, but once it's, once it's gone, uh, there's, there's no coming back. Well, they have to, you know, pay twice as much to get them back. And that's why, you know, getting the LC Evans is really, has been a cheap option. And since we've started the project, I've had someone come down from Auckland and he, he said that if this, the LC Evans was gonna be refurbished up in Auckland, it would have cost a million dollars. So, you know, when you put it in that context, it's money well spent and it's definitely an asset for us.
Councillor Wood.
Yeah, thanks, Shane. Um, can you just tell, tell us two things about the LC Evans? One, one, we can look forward to that, uh, like the service starting.
When she's operational.
And you said this summer in Europe.
Yeah, well, that's still possible, that's still possible. Um, we've just had a $2,000 grant and, uh, and that's sort of pushed us, just taken us to the next level. Um, but time, time flies and when you're working with volunteers that rely on, um, you know, funding, it's, it's hard to put a finger at when that's, that's gonna be written. But we can imagine the boat will be chugging around the harbour before summer, or this summer. Not necessarily taking passengers, but, uh, creating a bit of awareness of what we've got and taking, uh, possible future clients and tourists, operators out there to show them what we've got. Because once you've got something, they'll come and talk to you. At the moment, we can't tell how many people we can carry. We can't tell them how long a taxi, A and B, and all those little bits and pieces.
That's good and thanks for all the work you've done on. Um, the other thing, will, will she actually be able to carry a bike?
Yes, yes, she used to carry all sorts of, uh...
Yeah.
Well, we, we maybe think up to a half a dozen. But if there was some day like they have Carlos Days, we'd, we'd hire a pontoon and we'd tow the pontoon behind us. And big, but you're still only gonna get twenty people on the boat. Um, I'd say that's a, a, a nice problem ahead, you know? And I'll just say to them, well, here's a free cup of coffee down at the cafe, wait for an hour and come back.
Thanks for that.
Councillor Z.
Yeah, Shane, I'd too say thank you for the, the work you've done. I think you've, um, it's been a long project with the LC Evans and you've been very tenacious, so keep up the good work. Um, the, but is still your intention to carry passengers on the LC Evans?
Oh, yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So they'll be likely to be running a service maybe, you know, across the harbour, that sort of thing, isn't it? There's no problems with that?
No, no, the, the infrastructure's there, um, back beach and, and Porta Balo.
Yeah.
Um, the LC Evans used to run there for, uh, she used to cross there for fifty years. So she has no problem getting across there as far as sailing up there. And it's a fairly sheltered part of the water, part of the harbour. Um, and it would be senseless to sort of run it along the peninsula, you could cycle and walk and catch a bus or go by car. It's best to sort of do that short trip straight across, cut the harbour in half and, and reduce the, the time it takes to get around. And it comes back to the cruise ships. There's a problem with the cruise ships when they turn up, uh, Port Chalmers is, is a problem there. And so we need something to try and relieve that pressure. And the more boats we have, buses, trains, taxis going out of, out of that hub there, Port Chalmers, the better. The LC Evans fits the bill. And if it's successful, uh, you know, other people will say, well, eventually we'll, um, get on the back of them as well. And, uh, so maybe you'll see some other boats on the harbour.
Well, it was always a good idea and it's still a good idea, so keep going because a lot of people are interested in the outcome.
You think I'm worried, that's great.
Um, one question. Thank you, Shane.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Shane, I wonder if you're aware that this is one of the boats, according to current plan, it's got a not applicable sign inside.
Oh, yes, yeah, I have, I was gonna speak to the admin here. Um, oh, just on the, on my submission where it says the Porta Balo option, it's got not applicable. Um, could I have that?
I understand it was technical, technical issue being resolved.
Okay, well, apparently it hasn't, I haven't been, not sure that it hasn't been counted. So I think it has.
It's been resolved.
Is there a technical glitch for those boats in the box or option?
Um, oh, do you have a submission to make?
No, I don't.
Well, then, we, I'm sorry, we've got people...
I'd like the priest to...
We've got lined, people lined up to submit.
I know.
Um, Mike Collins and Peter Hill. If you'll read the trust. All right. On to Peter.
Thank you.
Next ten, ten minutes to yours. Fire away.
Thanks for the opportunity. Good everybody, my name is Mike Collins. I'm, uh, the director of the learning environment at the Tagahar Polytechnic and, uh, one of the trustees for the Denedon digital trust.
And I'm Peter Hill, it's the other half of this scenario. Greetings to all. I'm currently, um, D P at Lowden Park High School.
Yeah, so we've got an apology from Mike Hart. He's unfortunately visiting a funeral with his family, so he couldn't make it today. But, uh, he sent us full support for the submission and was part of the co-author of the submission. And, um, also the support of the University of Tagah, which was also a cap that he was wearing and being here today. So really, just, just quickly, just to follow a bit of context where this came about. I mean, um, us, we were part of a, the idea came from the city actually around the Denedon digital strategy. And that a strategy needed to be formed for the city. And, um, a number of us were pretty much asked if we would get together and put together a strategy for the city. And, uh, over quite a long period of time, we went through a process of submissions, um, getting feedback from the community and business around what were the, what were the needs around the Denedon strategy. And, uh, we went through quite a, a thorough process. Um, and for me, it was quite, it's quite vivid, that submission process. We listened to topically between fifteen age submissions came through around rationale for why we needed the strategy in the first place. And, um, that kept, that's kept us very grounded the whole way through. That, that surrounds, uh, individuals, small businesses, um, large businesses, um, engaged with the community. So that, that's really where the strategy was born. And, um, following from that, the strategy was developed. Uh, we're all familiar with the strategy and familiar with projects from the strategy, so we don't have to harp on about that. Uh, but we, we really want the support for the strategy. Um, the strategy was all adopted and then the trust was formed, um, whereby the, the group, um, was a lot smaller, became the trustees, myself, Peter and Mike Hart from the University of Tagah. And, um, from there, we've really been focusing on some key projects. The, the initial were around connectivity for the city. So, and times moved on and the connectivity is improving. And now as we move into, uh, the other projects, the more around services and the use of those services, um, around, around associated projects. So, um, I guess I'm just here to reassure you a few things. One, that the strategy is strong. It's, um, very, uh, it, it sets a very strong vision. Um, it's recognized within other regions as a very, uh, strong strategy, uh, with the right aspirations. The projects within it, a lot has been achieved, which we'll have figured out. Um, from my perspective, wearing another hat, the Tagahar Polytechnic are pulling behind the strategy. We invest, um, time, uh, resources and money into projects that are associated with the strategy and likewise does the University of Tagah. So I'll probably pause at that point and then turn you over to Peter.
Yeah, I suppose one of the things we've done before we came to this, we didn't want to repeat what's already been said before. We understand that members of the digital office who are tasked with implementing a lot of those aspects have, have already spoken to you at length and shown you material. But we were here as trustees, as if you like, custodians of that initial group. And when Mike and I reflected on that, it was 2010 when we first got together. I think it was Jim Harden, he had to submit a CV almost to, to be on the group to be able to write, um, some strategy for the city, which we did gleefully and blingly. And, uh, I think at the time, I was, you know, sort of pushed out the door by the command of the trust, but it was, it was something that the trust had a vested interest in because they had a history of investing in. In the education and the development of the understanding for the people within the city, particularly with the education aspect. And I think that hasn't changed. I think there's been a, a slight pause while central government is organizing this connectivity aspects, but the focus is shifting, as it should do, to the services. What are we gonna do with this stuff now that we've got or now that we're getting it? And I think one of the things that's always been a problem and probably always will be a problem is that digital stuff creates images in people's heads. They're not sure what it means and how do you quantify it? How do you know whether you're getting value for it? And whose job is it to do it? And I think there's a real quandary there. And one of the reasons why I've remained within this trustees' environment, particularly with this one, is that often those tasks are forgotten about. We expect it to happen, we want it to happen, we know it should happen, but whose job is it to implement it? Whose job is it to make it happen? And, and as time has progressed from 2010 to 2012, before we actually start, were able to do anything, because that was when the strategy was formally, um, adopted, we've watched with interest as those projects have come, how those, how the emphasis on different things has changed. And it's now squarely on the, what are we gonna do with this? How do we enable the members of our community, both the able and the not so able, to take advantage of the opportunities that are there? And whose role is it to ensure that that happens? I for one, and I think Mike would agree, we've sat on the trust. It, we've done that because it's the only vehicle that we have at the moment to enable that to happen. Perhaps as time goes on and, and in the next wee while, there won't need to be, um, the current vehicle. Another one will come along that enables it to happen better. Totally behind that, that, that did eventuate. Because in the end, it's about the outcomes. It's about what have we done for the week? What have we done for the able? What have we done for the smes, the small businesses, the schools, the education sector? And how have we enabled this place to be a better place? Because we all choose to live here. One of the outcomes, I, and I'm not gonna go into outcomes because you've seen all those, you've seen videos, you've seen stuff. But one of the things in recent times that has, I think, left me scratching my head a little bit, is that other parts of our region have joined in. And the other parts of the region have looked and seen, gee, they've got a strategy. We need one. So they have, obviously, one of those projects that developed was, um, the regional strategy. Because Dunedin is part of the Tagah, is part of the wider group. So how do we, as a city, contribute to the wider group? How does the wider group, the wider region, contribute to the city? And that's been quite a, um, it's an eye-opening process again. Having gone to Hamden in recent times and sat in a church on a Sunday and, and listened to the town trying to survive and understand how they can go forward and how does digital stuff fit in their roadmap? And whose job is it to help Hamden? Next week, I went to Roxburgh and did exactly the same thing. Found half of Roxburgh there and going back next week to another, the other half of Roxburgh, I think, to, to further develop that. But again, whose role is it to support those communities who want to do something? Or those groups of people within the environment that want to do something but aren't quite sure how? Obviously, we're, we're defined by our, um, our mission, our strategy, our goals, but they are very quickly shifting to what will we do with this stuff? How will we do it? And we need to understand how we enable that to happen. How do we educate? How do we support? Currently, the arm is the digital office. It needs to function, it needs funding to survive. If it doesn't exist, if it doesn't get funded, it won't survive. We can donate, as we have for the last four years, all our time and, and the resources that have gone with it. We, we're happy to continue donating ours, but we need real things and real people doing a real job because that's in the end what's gonna make the difference. The outcomes that have been achieved, in my opinion, um, have been significant. The amount of funding and time that's gone and I, I'm, to be honest, I'm a trustee and I sit back and go, wow, did we do that? Did we really do that? We didn't even know we were gonna do that, but we've done it. And we've done all these other new things that, um, perhaps weren't on the agenda when we started because we didn't know about them. That's the world we live in. What will be next? We know there's a whole lot more that needs to be done. There's probably a never-ending amount of stuff that will need to be done. Where it should be done from, what should be done? I think that's a question that we're still asking ourselves. We aren't sure. Um, but at the moment, someone has to be that vehicle, that enabler. I've lived in schools all my life and the bell's about to go because it's ten minutes. So I understand if there are any questions, um, please feel free to ask.
Councillor Kell.
I'm going to ask you a question I probably, if I realized you were here, I would have asked in first place. It seems that this is sort of happening a wee bit backwards. Instead of the usual process of having you, you people applying to a grant, in which case you would have put your financials in, you would have put, this is what we're up to, this is who we are, this is what we're doing, and this is what we want to do next and why, why you've come to council. This is happening differently. What I'd like to know is, would you be happy to go through that process like everyone else is expected to? And secondly, can we have your financials? Because I have asked your chairman for them and he says that he can't give them to me unless the trustees agree to it. So I'm asking you, formally here, whether we can have some more financial information such as that we can make a decision? Because at the moment, it's pretty skinny for us to be asked for a hundred, $300,000 on the basis that there's more things we really would like to be doing. We're not quite sure what yet because it's exciting and it'll keep going. You're doing fabulous stuff, can we have some more?
Absolutely. I mean, we're all about transparency. I mean, and from the trustees' perspective, we, we support providing more information if it's gonna make a difference. And, um, we, as Peter alluded to before, some of our model needs to change to, to assist with things going forward. We're happy to, we're flexible in terms of the model. But in terms of that kind of information, by all means, I mean, uh, it's public. We're happy to provide...
Well, no, it isn't at the moment. We can't find it anywhere and we haven't been able to get it.
But I apologize for that. But I mean, we'll get that information out if it's, that's gonna assist in the decision, yeah, by all means.
I think there was two parts to that. There was the first part around the process, um... There was the first part around the process. We only know what we know, to be fair. And we thought this was the process. If there's another one, then yeah, having to explore whatever the other processes are that could lead to the same outcomes.
Just be, have a slightly more regular.
That's fine. I just want to finally just say that it has been all just our own personal time and stuff going into this. The idea that we need a strategy, that the city was born from the city, so we've actually provided that. And it's one of those things, what you focus on grows. And if we want to focus on the strategy to develop, you know, more innovative projects and get back to the community and business, then we have to resource that. I'm conscious and I apologise if we haven't followed a process or if there's more transparency. Completely open to go that way, but I just want to get out there that we are very much outcome focused. We're quite passionate about it, you can tell there. And it's one of those things, if we invest in it, it will be extremely successful. And if not, then it'll dissolve. Got it?
Thank you. If we chose not to fund this, what message do you think that's sending to the schools and Polytech and other institutions in Dunedin?
Yeah, we discussed that. And it's, we'd have to strongly think about it, almost in the big strategy, because the expectations have been built around projects. I think it would send a very negative wave. It would be how you'd actually manage that communication because there are some, you can see the difference it's making and it actually, it would actually be trying to work out another vehicle to achieve the same types of outcomes that we kind of alluded to. But there would have to be some close management and careful communications because the expectations that have been built are quite positive and it would take away from some of that. So it's a really, really good point you've made and something we've considered that we'd have to give, we'd have to give a lot of thought and attention to how we would work through that process.
I think that one of the key aspects, I mean, I've been involved in, I think, three different cities' strategies because word gets around everywhere, once someone's got one that works or one that looks good and is outcome-based as opposed to that looks good on a piece of paper. I think Hamilton's is spolled because they essentially had a nice glossy document but didn't resource it. I think the danger is that we've got a strategy and whose role is it to implement it? The strategy was born out of a whole lots of people, a whole lots of different input, but at the moment, there is no vehicle to implement it. So if we said, let's not implement it, let's have the document only, I think that would be a real shame. And given that we've got three other TLAs who are funding a regional strategy and this is the only one, I think currently, that doesn't, it would look a bit weird.
Thank you, councillor Pete.
Thank you, Peter. I think you've partly answered what I'm just going to ask you, but I wonder if you could elaborate. So the other councils, Waiitaka, Pluto and Central Taro and the ORC are somehow involved in this digital movement. And I'm just wondering if you could just tell me what the setup is for that and how it's financed and how they contribute financially to it.
Essentially, the four TLAs got together and said, we need a strategy for ourselves, for the region. I think it was born out of the Mural Forum. I could be corrected there, but they all put in, I think, $20,000 each to create a regional strategy, which has been produced and held up and published online. If you get a chance to have a read of it, it looks like a regional version of Dunedin's because it takes in the wider view and the wider perspective and they've agreed to look, to implement what's in that strategy, both within their own area and where there's a common factor, obviously, to do it across the board.
So just follow up, I mean, your written statement says that Dunedin City Council came together with four, so they're making five, I assume. Is that not correct?
It was north, south, central and Dunedin as the regional council.
And the regional, yeah. So that's not one financially, no, but so Dunedin.
That's a project, yeah, yeah. That's a different project that's been born out of that and was nothing to do with originally, it was just the digital office was contracted to do that, to develop that for the region.
I'm just wondering what the DCC's input to that would be.
I can perhaps explain all of that. The Dunedin Digital Strategy was developed first and it got off the ground and was gaining such a reputation and recognition. And there was also the realisation that some of the initiatives or proposals being put forward within the Dunedin rural area equally applied or even more in terms of potential to the rural areas and the other TLAs around us. So Peter's right, it was presented at the Mural Forum as an opportunity for the other TLAs to, in a sense, piggyback, but they would be quite funded and they did. And they came in and contracted the digital office. So they didn't have to go through reinventing the wheel, but they did have to pay. And what they did in that work and spread out, and there was also the recognition that digital success is about connectivity and you can't be disconnected to yourself. So there was an advantage in connecting to the regions, to the regions connecting back. And part of that was in the context of the rural broadband rollout as well.
Councillor Mc.
Thank you. Thank you and thank you for your work over the last four years. Appreciate that it's all voluntary and I saw you up there on a server in Hampden and thought, goodness, he's nearly got it. My question is just in relation to the original strategy. We've had once submitted a raised issue of strategic advisory groups and the fact that they were highlighted as part of the original strategy. And appreciate that you're on voluntary time and all of these things take time and we've only got manager for one day a week and all of that. But do you see any value in potentially establishing those, given where we're at in the development of the digital office? And how would you see those operating in relation to the trust?
I think there's a number of things that come from that. One was originally when we set up, I think there was a wider group that we thought would be the trustees. Gary Tyrell was one significant member of that, obviously passed away and couldn't join us. But we've always envisaged that a trust or the organisation that leads the implementation of the strategy would represent the community. And I think at the moment, we're obviously very education focused, you know, heavily so, but would like to see that it needs to evolve to become a wider group. Now, whether that's the trust or whether that's a steering group, the members of the, if you like, the governments needs to be representative of the group. And we've wrestled with that for a wee while now and said, look, when and how do we go out and get wider input? Because clearly we need that. This is about the good of the community and therefore the community needs to be represented. So it's a yes. Is that a short answer? It's a very big yes, yes.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you. And I think my question is sort of following on from that and it's heartening to hear you guys talk about, you know, being open to changing the model of how we deliver on these outcomes and, you know, seeing a time potentially where there is an entirely different vehicle for delivering these. And there have been a couple of, more than one submission to us suggesting that the trust and its operations be reviewed. And I wonder if you're looking at options for how to get more input into that, as you just said in response to councillor McTavish's question, whether or not that might be a good option to look at and an opportune time to do so?
I think you're totally right and that's something we'll be doing. I think the strategy's reached a point, it's broken into four kind of sections. And the first focus, I said earlier, is around connectivity. But the whole, all the initiatives now are going to another level of, it's a different type of work from the original projects. We need to bring different types of people together to provide assistance and bring the right skills. So I think you're right in terms of we need to review, you know, some of the membership stuff, some of the model. And I guess the thing is, the strategy's still sounding strong, but maybe some of the operating of the trust or the way in which we configure things and bringing these subgroups with different entities, it's a healthy time to be doing that. So I support what you're saying. I think we should be smarter at that.
I'm smiling a little bit because originally when we got involved and the creation of the trust, in part was because hesitance around the city's ability to deliver on the strategy. There was a nervousness in the community about will it get lost in bureaucracy? So a trust was set up to ensure that that was going to happen. I think we've moved on there and everybody's thinking and obviously you're in a group of councillors. And the new thinking may well be, well, it can be done better, it can be done differently, it can be done a new way. In the end, we're about outcomes. Whether it's called a trust or whether it's part of a different organisational structure, great if that's an improvement, as long as we keep getting the outcomes. And as we've seen for the last couple of years, there's been some significantly positive things happening that we're quite, we're really proud of. You know, we're proud of the people who have done it and the outcomes. How that gets delivered isn't a big deal for us. We're not wedded to the current system, but the current system does work. It can be improved.
Is that the kind of thing that we can help you do over the next?
Absolutely.
Quality.
We're voluntary labour who are.
And thank you for that.
Trying to help the city do something and if we can find a better way to do it, then bring it on.
It is very rewarding. The approach is pretty, pretty good.
Any more questions? Thank you both. Good submission.
Thanks, opportunity. Got it.
Thank you.
Welcome, Vaughan. I'm not sure I pronounced your surname correctly.
That's all right. It's difficult. You definitely do. Thanks very much for your time to listen to me today. And I'd just like to start off by saying that I think it's really good that we had the opportunity to submit one of those little templates. It was pretty good, but there wasn't much room to write for people who were sort of concerned, but there was only two topics that we were able to submit on. So just a little bit limited by that and I hope that I can, that there's maybe some other suggestions I can make that I haven't tabled yet. They're not questions, I might click too long.
Well, you've got the five minutes. Okay, you can go for it.
Well, I've just got my hand here. I'd just like to know, the first question's on this cycle plan and that does the proposed Corvella route take any money from, just because I'm not sure what process does, any money from the Black Spot, the DCC general minor safety work?
Separate.
It's a separate fund.
Separate.
Oh, excellent. Just another question around that submission form. Some people were concerned that their submissions weren't acknowledged or assigned to that. And not applicable for some reason, maybe they filled the number out wrong on the form? Is anyone aware of why that's?
Nick, can I have that for you?
Thanks.
Yes, there was a problem with 19, 19 or 20 out of all the submissions that we received. So it was on the last day, the last day of submission, the system was overloaded and 19 of those sort of defaulted and put not applicable for the paperwork. But we're aware of that and all the councillor's documentation will be corrected for the deliberations. So it won't affect the outcome.
My next question was, because I can only submit on the heritage, it's good work by the way you're putting that forward. There are other ways of, I just like, other ways of acknowledging heritage would be to just have plaques or do you have some kind of acknowledgement in the replacement building? You can preserve heritage without preserving the physical building, just through the information sharing, information storage, education, stuff like that. So that's one way you can do it with heritage without worrying about the physical building issue. And the other remaining suggestions are not, I couldn't actually submit on the form, but I have some questions or not questions, submissions about the waste plan. I'd like to see information done on separating the waste streams a bit more. So in Australia, for example, they separate the different types of waste that can go and they have different charge rates for the waste, based on hazard of the waste, not the weight, because often weight is not as direct, although it's easy to have a car drop over, it's not actually descriptive of the impact that the waste is having on the stream, the whole waste cycle. So that's suggesting that a little bit more detail goes into separating those pricing. So if someone took a load of tyres down, it wouldn't be weighed on tyres, it would be weighed on tyres, sorry, not weight or depending on the industry. It's catering more for industry than the waste stream. You got ideas? The South Dunedin.
Must have been big hand.
Yeah. The South Dunedin Library, I think, I've had experience working in libraries and being under time constraints, having no computer at home at some occasions. And half an hour in front of the district council was nowhere near significant enough time to log in, do what you need to do, log out or print even. So I would suggest that if you're going to put a timeline on the computers in the library, that sufficient time or is allocated for the people who are going to need, who really, really need those services. And finally, just one thing I hope to come sooner rather than later is the repair of the intersection down by Polytech. I constantly use that intersection every day. The barriers are on the wrong side of the road, pushes cyclists onto incoming cars. There's no, very limited pedestrian safety on that highway. It's probably, you're going to say transit are responsible, but initially I'd like to see some initiation hopefully on the, maybe relocating those barriers or hall for your yard. Those barriers are on the wrong side of the, the cyclists aren't protected by the traffic coming on the lot. Thank you for everyone.
Do you have to take questions?
Yeah, if there's any questions.
Questions, councillor. Anyone need clarification? Doesn't Peter beat them? Thank you. Thank you for your submission. Doctor Claire. Next five minutes is yours to monopolise.
Thank you very much. Thanks very much for the opportunity. First of all, can I just say, just to acknowledge the excellent work that the council is doing around cycleways and building all of the important relationships in the city for a strong economic development strategy. There's probably many other things that could be thanked for as well, but those are two in particular. I just want to, you'll take my submission as read, there's just three areas that I'd quickly like to cover off on. First of all, on the digital office, in my view, of critical importance to the city, for the city's future in terms of the ongoing and increasingly important role that digital infrastructure and the leverage that can be gained from digital infrastructure for economic development of all communities around New Zealand. I'd like to say that the digital strategy that was developed in 2008, '09, when it was, was seen nationwide as being a ground setting by a number of quite high-profile technology groups, organisations. But being able to see that through from a strategy that sits in a document to the reality is of critical importance. Any community in New Zealand that doesn't have a digital strategy and a way of implementing a digital strategy is behind the times. And so I just want to say that to the council that this, in my view, is of critical importance for this community to be really on top of how it maps, how fibre, because our future is increasingly about fibre, where the fibre is and then how the relationships can be developed for leverage. And that's not just, education is critically important, but also business community and also the relationship between the local and central government and the telecommunications industry generally. So I just want to put that on the table. The South Dunedin Community Facility and Library, I'm sure you would. The South Dunedin Community Facility and Library, I'm sure you would expect that I would be coming here advocating very strongly for that. Its ability to provide critical social services in a part of the city which is underserved and has a very highly, a dense population of very low-income people, many of whom have limited ability to travel on an ongoing basis. I also want to link that with the digital strategy because of, as was said by the previous submitter, the ability for people to connect with the world is increasingly reliant on access to the internet. The latest census shows us that 27% of households have no internet connection, which is quite high. That is the digital divide. These are people who are older, who are poor, and many of whom have children, who cannot participate fully in society. So that is, and who also don't have a lot of money for bus fares to travel into town to go to the main library. So a facility on the southern side of the city would seem to me to be of a high importance. Finally, I just want to reference the recent Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change report that came out that clearly showed the impact of rising sea levels and to link that to the effects of climate change in our own city, in particular the South Dunedin basin, of which I know you're all highly aware. I just want to reflect back to you that there is increasing unease and community concern and lack of knowledge. And I know that these are sensitive issues and certainly will require more than just local government response. They certainly will require central government involvement. But I do want to say that I believe that the time has come for serious public, community conversations to begin on these issues, to start to address some of the concerns. And they're not just concerns about the future, they're about what things that are actually appearing right now in terms of the state of the housing and the ability for people to make decisions about their futures. Thank you.
Thank you Claire. Questions councillors? Councillor McTague.
Thank you. Thank you Claire. Just on that last point. Does it relieve you to hear that we have embarked on work around South Dunedin in terms of climate change adaptation and options with an eye to taking out, instead of simply highly full IPCC information to the community, a more detailed understanding of what the potential effects are on South Dunedin and some possible mitigation options, if there are any, to the community sometime within the next 12 months?
That does relieve me to hear. I am aware that that work is being undertaken. I suppose what I'm saying is it's a bit of a gentle push for sooner rather than later in terms of the conversations. And I'm fully confident that the council is highly aware and is doing a considerable amount of work. I'm just anxious for those conversations to begin in a very responsible way for all concerned and to bring in any other parties that need to be around the table, which would include all the central government representatives, MPs in the city, but anyone else that is seen to be appropriate. Because I believe that it's got to be a discussion that has a number of parties at the table. Thank you.
Thank you Claire. Welcome Alan.
Thank you. The worship of the mayor and councillors, thank you just for giving me some time this afternoon. I see we're running a little bit behind time, so I'll keep my presentation relatively brief. My name is Alan Shanks, I'm the executive officer for the Council of Social Services Dunedin. As we have been the recipient of funding from the Dunedin City Council over many years, I felt it's important for me on behalf of the organisation to personally acknowledge the support and give a brief account as to our contribution to the community and voluntary sector here in Dunedin. And I do also understand that there is a new proposal for funding, which we will be making the submission. I'd like to also highlight the fact that we are undergoing a robust and extensive review of our organisation, facilitated by Jan Hudson and supported by the Tindall Foundation. Now this review will be looking at in-house operations, our governance and our position in the community to ensure we deliver effectively, sustainably and with relevance to our members and to the non-for-profit sector. I'm sure most of you around the table will acknowledge that there are many great activities taking place here in Dunedin on a daily basis. And in fact, there are 800 charities registered on the charities registered based in Dunedin and many hundreds more community interest groups. However, a headline in the Otago Daily Times on the 19th of April, "Warning Bells Ringing For Community Sector", highlight the fact that not as all well, with many organisations facing funding restraints, mergers and cancelled contracts. Council of Social Services Dunedin therefore has taken up the challenge by widening its reach and facilitating new opportunities to provide to the community and voluntary sector with a number of initiatives. For example, we have set up an insurance scheme with a local insurance broker for the non-for-profit sector that is saving thousands of dollars of insurance premiums. And most of this, as you can appreciate, has happened since the Christchurch earthquake. Dunedin Community Accounting provides free advice for treasurer of clubs, societies and other non-for-profit groups around budgeting and financial reporting etc. And over the past nine months, we have given assistance to 38 clients. We currently have 35 students from the Otago University working with us in this service and also six chartered accountants who give their time voluntary. And it has to be acknowledged too, that the partnership with the Dunedin City Council, Sport Otago University, the Otago University Institute of Chartered Accountants make this a very unique service. As a registered Ministry of Social Development mentor, we're currently working with 14 organisations from Immacagal and Gore in the south, to Omuru, Ashburton, Westport and Christchurch in the north and also in Dunedin. As a mentor, we are assisting those organisations to become stronger, more adaptable, more integrated and therefore more sustainable. Now you might wonder why we're doing contracts out of Dunedin. The reason being is that we have now in the organisation some expertise, which is required under the ministry to undertake these particular projects. And fortunately, one of my colleagues has got a reputation that has spread just outside Dunedin. So we, as I say, doing work right through basically up to Christchurch. We're currently assisting an organisation called Victor, Visual Impairment Charitable Trust, providing administration and governance support, also helping to develop a constitutional structure for a new mediation service due to be launched here in Dunedin within the next six months. We also completed eight submissions on government policy in partnership with the Dunedin Community Law Centre over the last six months. In conclusion, as an organisation, we do not take it lightly the important relationship we have with the council and staff here, but need to be reminded that we cannot afford to work in isolation if we want to achieve the communities we desire. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Any questions? Councillor McTague.
Thank you Alan, and thank you very much for your submission. The query that I have is just around your current process in terms of, and I acknowledge this is really exciting, especially it is such a time of change. Will you be engaging directly with our staff around that? Particularly when we're looking at our own, we go through our review of grants and these sort of things, seems like a really appropriate time to be having some sheet conversations around focus.
I can respond to that by saying that I have just made an appointment with Rebecca Williams, it's today. And we're meeting on the 22nd.
Awesome.
Arana?
Thank you Alan.
Thank you. Appreciate your submission. Andy Cavillius and Robin McTone from Otago Peninsula Trust. Welcome Andy. Welcome Rob.
Thank you. The other councillors, we will try to keep this brief and succinct around the, our submission was around the very impassioned issue, as I know you've had many submissions on the cycleways on the Otago Peninsula. And we would just confirm everything that we wrote in our submission to you, but the most important point that we would like to make is that the Otago Peninsula Trust takes the issue of the safety of pedestrian and cyclists as well as motorised vehicles on the peninsula very seriously. We have interests, as you'll appreciate, from one end of the peninsula to the other and are very familiar with the issues around cycleways and walkways. The issue, we believe, needs to be addressed in a wider way in the context of the fact that when the first, the timeline was set for introducing cycleways and walkways incrementally down the peninsula, the exponential growth of cycling, I don't believe was anticipated to the level that it is. The present proposal is a 10-year timeline and we believe that that should be, there should be some way of sourcing funding to ensure that that's shortened by at least five years. And we just submit that the council should revisit the whole issue of the timeline of the project. And we would just like to point out that the Otago Peninsula Trust has already put its money where its mouth is in the context of safety, road safety on the peninsula by contributing an excess of $200,000 to upgrade. That happened around Dean Phallic Corner, what, two years ago, three years ago, to ensure that all three cyclists, pedestrians and motorised vehicles had optimum safety around that area.
Questions councillors? Councillor Wilson.
I know Andy, you're from the peninsula, I don't know about you Robin, but I'm just wondering, I presume you are. In order to speed up, it would require more money obviously, are you happy to consider either a rate's rise or a targeted rate to the area that benefits most in order to get that even resolved?
Well, I could speak personally as opposed to for the trust. I would be more than happy to do that if it was going to facilitate the shortening of that timeline so that, you know, the whole area was accommodated.
Are you going to give, Robin, your personal view?
I was at the peninsula recently, I am no longer, but from a point of view, and I can't speak for our board of trustees, but I believe some sort of targeted rate could work. If I was still personally on the peninsula, I would not see that. We can say that both Andy and I drive the length of the peninsula on a regular basis.
Can sometimes cycle it.
We have introduced a new electric green bike, cycle initiative out of Glingphallic. We clearly want a safe route for those people to be able to ride. It's effortless, seeing the areas that are working. So it's very difficult to make a choice and we believe to be able to implement all areas in a shorter term is the answer.
Thank you, Councillor Finn.
Thank you. Just two questions, one to follow on the targeted rate issue. If you lived in McCandrie Bay, would you be prepared to pay?
Yep. I have lived in McCandrie Bay and the answer is yes.
Even though your section is completed?
Yep.
Second.
Yes. Second question, and it's about the green bikes initiative and congratulations on that. I just wondered if you have a feel for which direction your customers go with your electric bikes?
We see them in the safest direction if they haven't got experience. So we will ask them to use that cycleway possible, if they're not highly experienced. If they've got experience cycling, they go with the light. So generally, we've seen them leave Glingphallic, use the cycle walkway and often come off the Company Bay Road, go up to Larnex Castle. They'll go as far as Tarau here, but we had a gentleman come in yesterday and it was his 70th birthday and he wanted to go for a ride, so he took one for a ride and we ensured that he stayed on the cycle walkway.
So just in a visit, the cycleway walkway has completed the whole length of Portavello and Harrington Road, which way would they choose to go?
I can't say which way they would choose to go, but I can see benefit from both ends. We've had people looking at picking up bikes or torches for railway station. If they met the rail trail or met the cruise, there's no reason why the cycle tourism couldn't come from the railway station right down the peninsula. If they're leaving Glingphallic, they've got options both ways. Ideally, that would be the circuit.
Thank you. You wouldn't prefer them to go to the Royal Albert Hall?
Not necessarily, because of the, on those bikes, there's a time on the battery life and various things. So not necessarily. We encourage them to go out and have a look at the peninsula, to call into the other cafes, the Ruby China. We encourage all of the activities on the peninsula.
Thank you.
Just as another, Tara, is the bike high down? Are you getting some demand?
Yeah, it's building. And we've actually had start, we've had it start up until about a couple of weeks ago every day. We've just taken that away and it's bookings only. It's building quietly. But it's early days, it's a soft launch if you like.
I think it would be fair to say that the, that everybody who has done that experience has loved every minute of it, whether they've just taken their bikes down to McCandrie Bay for a coffee or over to, out to Tarau here or up to Larnex Castle. And we can see that that demand is, will grow in the summer. At the moment, it's highly weather dependent of course, but on the fine days, it's great to see people out there.
So going back to the battery life, are you going to need to put a recharging station in the car over here?
We can do that. Well, we have, we can charge it. They can charge to three, three pin plug they charge, so it can be charged anywhere.
Councillor McTague.
Well, I just wondered if people are surprised to hear that they can easily get up to Larnex Castle on a bike?
Yes, they are surprised.
Because I imagine it wouldn't immediately be where I would think you could go on it.
It is very easy to go to Larnex Castle. And we've had, last week, we took six of the bikes, two Larnex Castle for a tourism, what they call Fimil. So we had groups of people coming into Larnex Castle to look at their operation. They then biked from there to the Larnex Lodge, so they got a taste of the green bikes. So we've got quite a lot of interest from the tourism sector as well. Thank you.
Councillor Lexon Park.
Just on the bikes charging, how long does it take to charge?
Fully flat, they can take up to four hours to charge. We've got two different types, one's shorter than the other. But I have personally ridden both from Glingphallic to Tarau Head, you can get to Tarau Head and back. You don't have a lot of battery depth at that stage, but there's options to swap out batteries.
I asked because in another forum, we were talking about charging points for electric vehicles. Well, you're talking about electric vehicles on the side of smaller store and the issue, one of the issues obviously will be not just plug compatibility but time. So is there a fast charge mechanism of any of them?
At the moment, we haven't got that, but I believe you can get that, but you can also swap them out, swap the batteries out. So that's quite easy.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Great submission.